Good evening and welcome. We love a full house and we love learning across the district and we love little people in the front row. It is the happiest of our meetings. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could the secretary please call the role?
Anna Braun.
Here.
Timothy Cummings.
Here.
Jamie Falco.
Here.
Louis Figaroa.
Here.
Lori Herrick.
Here.
Lee Wong-Hung.
Here.
Wilbur Pan.
Here.
Mary Ann Tanyos.
Here.
Heather Glass.
Here.
We have a quorum, please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and posted at the East Brunswick or the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. All right, and we will go to Dr. Woleski with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Glass, and good evening to everyone. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Hammer Shuld Upper Elementary School. The art teachers of these talented students are Catherine Barrett and Miriam Kulik. Russ Petronko is the principal. Last week, we were fortunate enough to be able to host a training for Sources of Strength program. Excuse me. And thank you to Jen Stetson and the East Brunswick Alliance for funding the training. We had 50 staff members from Hammer Shuld Upper, excuse me, Upper Elementary School, Churchill Junior High School, and East Brunswick High School attend the training to learn more about the program's core values and preventative nature to address suicide, substance abuse, and bullying in our schools. The program utilizes a strength-based model to teach students how to cope with and manage life's challenges. Students who are nominated for this program will be trained next, and they will act as peer leaders in their buildings to spread messages of hope, help, strength, while acting as connectors for the struggling peers and connecting them with trusted adults. A very special thank you is in order to the Mayor's Charity Fund for providing breakfast, coffee, and snacks, as well as Maria's Pizza in Milltown and Jersey Mike's in East Brunswick for providing lunch. We are always thankful for those generous donations. On Saturday, October 11th, the East Brunswick Marching Band delivered an outstanding performance at the NJ MBDA competition hosted by Monroe Township High School. The band earned their highest score of the season and proudly took home awards for Best Visual in their class and Best Visual of the entire show, and it was an incredible accomplishment, so congratulations to them. You can catch the band in action again this Saturday, October 18th, and that's when the East Brunswick Band Boosters Association hosts the 42nd Annual East Brunswick Marching Band Festival at East Brunswick High School. The evening will feature performances by 18 high school marching bands, concluding with a show-stopping performance by the East Brunswick High School marching band themselves. This event is the band's biggest fundraiser of the year, so come out to enjoy an exciting night of music and support our amazingly talented students. Last evening, the CPAG Town Hall proved to be a highly productive and unifying event, successfully bringing our community together in support of our students. The Town Hall served as an open forum that facilitated essential collaboration, critical dialogue, and shared commitment to our special education programs. Board members Lori Herrick and Wilbur Pan were also in attendance. The special education leadership team and CPAG leaders extend their sincere gratitude for the passion and valuable insight and deep engagement demonstrated by parents, and I know that's shared equally by this entire Board of Education. This collective effort is vital as we continue to build a stronger, more inclusive framework dedicated to the success of every learner. In the month of October, each of our community-based elementary schools, in partnership with Keep Middlesex Moving, hosted a Walk to School Day. The goal is to teach children in Middlesex County the importance of walking safely and the benefits of walking as a means to get to places, to exercise, and to help the environment. On this evening's agenda is a resolution of proclamation for National Principals Month, and I'm proud to recognize the critical instructional leadership of all of our principals and secondary assistant principals. We appreciate their dedication and commitment to all students and the East Brunswick school community. Also on this evening's agenda is a resolution of proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, which is October 5th through October 11th. We are grateful to fire marshals Jason Whalen and Sean Burdy and the Fire Prevention Bureau and all the volunteer firefighters who serve the entire East Brunswick community. The athletic department proudly recognized our graduating athletes by holding Senior Night celebrations for every fall sport. Congratulations to our September High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course, for modeling exceptional character. On Sunday, November 16th, the East Brunswick Education Foundation will be hosting their annual 5K walk-run bear crawl and kids' fun run. Get in those steps while meeting new neighbors, supporting school spirit, helping to fund grants across the district. Visit our website at EVnet.org for registration information. And just a reminder, schools will be closed Monday, October 20th, and parent-teacher conferences will take place on Tuesday, October 21st through Friday, October 24th. These are single-session days for all schools, but lunch will be served in grades K through six. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have resolutions of appreciation and recognition. Are we going out there?
We are going to go out there.
Okay, we are going out there. Why are there two?
Uh, one for each.
Okay. Just checking. I was supposed to be doing one. All right, our first resolution is for Fire Prevention Week. Are we calling people up now or no?
You can read it first and then follow up.
Whereas, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, October 5th through 11th, 2025, is designated as Fire Prevention Week with the campaign theme "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium-Iron Batteries in Your Home," focusing on the safe use, charging, and recycling of these batteries, and whereas, East Brunswick's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas, committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our town, including our educational community, the East Brunswick Public Schools welcomes East Brunswick Fire and Emergency Services personnel into our school to educate our students. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week and encourages all the people of East Brunswick to heed the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2025 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of East Brunswick's Fire and Emergency Services, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education appreciates the efforts of East Brunswick's Fire and Emergency Services personnel to make our community a safe place in which to live.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, I need a motion. Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Our first responders are the best.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, we had a motion and a second, but we did not, we did not have a vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bingo.
All right, I move that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas, schools inspire the next generation of professionals, political leaders, artists, educators, and others who contribute to a healthy and prosperous society, and whereas, principals and assistant principals are responsible for providing instructional leadership and professional management in our schools, and whereas, principals and assistant principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, set performance goals and objectives, and ensure high-quality instruction, and whereas, school principals and assistant principals are responsible for the safety of their students and the security of the school, and whereas, principals and assistant principals are key to implementing state and federal education reforms in New Jersey, and whereas, the month of October 2025 has been declared National Principals Month and is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of our nation's principals and assistant principals and the enthusiasm they have for providing quality educational experiences and guidance to their students, and whereas, the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and appreciates the skills, dedication, and commitment of its principals and assistant principals and the challenges they face daily. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognizes and commends its principals and assistant principals for their continued service to our children. Can I have a motion?
Move.
Second? The second thing? Okay. Okay, discussion?
Principles are awesome.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you move?
Yes. So the principals and assistant principals are not just awesome, they are the foundation of our school district, they are the business card for East Brunswick community and the school district. When parents have any concern, they pick up the phone, call the principal's office. You, principals, and assistant principals answer all their questions, either emergency or not emergency. So you answer all the questions the parent have. So if the phone calls are not answered, they will cause all kinds of anxiety or all kinds of things. So thank you very much. I have three children, two in Hammer Shuld, one in Churchill. Sometime I forgot the passport for this generous parent access. I pick up the phone, my phone was answered. That makes me so happy because my boy sits, sits next to me, says, "Dad, how can I get access?" So this is just one example, and sometimes this student forgets about their IDs and they forget about their lunchbox. You guys were the answer, all kind of tiny but extremely important things. So that's why I say you guys are the cornerstone of this community, this school district. Thank you very much. As board member, as a parent, as taxpayer, as an East Brunswick community member, thank you.
I would like to add, as a lifelong educator, that I often believe, you know, you may think that the teachers are in the room with the children and that's what sets the tone, and it does on a day-to-day in the room, but as goes the principals, so go the schools. And if you really want to look at where we need to be thankful for the security of our children, for the academic growth, for the excellence, for the support of the students, the staff, everyone in the community, it always goes back to the principals. And in talking to many of these principals, their knowledge of their individual communities and what works for their school, which is different depending on the schools, just shows such a love for the community and their students, and I am just deeply appreciative. Anyone else? Lou?
Yes, thank you. As someone who was fortunate enough to work with most of the principals and assistant principals, as well as of course, our entire staff here, I'm so grateful for what you do on a daily basis, on a yearly basis. As my two colleagues already said, you know, you are the cornerstone to what really makes this district tick, but in addition to that, you build that school climate. For the kid who comes in in the morning, who doesn't have maybe the best home life, our principals are critical for that child. You may not always know it, but it's there. And for those kids who are going through our system, our secondary schools, our assistant principals, toughest job in the district by the way, being assistant principal of secondary school, but it's very rewarding. And for our principals who guide the way all along, thank you. Thank you for what you do every day. We couldn't be the kind of district we are or we want to be without you, so thank you very much.
As I'm looking, I'm looking at the row of principals, I worked for some of you, and I can't tell you what an absolute pleasure my experience as a teacher in East Brunswick was. I worked for a lot of different principals and vice principals, and by far, you folks here are top of the top, and I just want to let you know how much you are appreciated because I know being a principal, you're not always feeling the love from maybe your staff who are coming in and complaining, "My room's too hot, my room's too cold." You know, a million and one things that you have to cope with, and so I just want to let you know how much you are appreciated.
Mary Ann?
I just want to remark. No, that was very applause-worthy, didn't mean to interrupt applause. Just on a personal note, as a student, when I was in East Brunswick, I'm embarrassed to say that immediately to mind, I can't remember every principal I had because they were so amazing at making things run seamlessly. I was focused on athletics, academics, and the arts, and I'm so proud to be sitting here, and I see the continuation of excellence that empowered me to be here, and I'm very grateful to all of you, personally, as a parent, as a board member. You guys are just, I don't have words. Amazing, thank you.
Tough acts to follow, but we have some of the most amazing principals in this district. The amount of advocacy that you display is remarkable. I think it's often overlooked that they come to after-school events late into the evening. They're accessible even on the weekends, sorry. And you know, the humility that you display is remarkable. You know, for these kids, I've seen them slime themselves, tape themselves to walls, go into dunk tanks, and we have pictures to prove it, so thank you for all that you do. You are the heart of this district, thank you.
All right.
Still awesome.
Oh, okay. I believe there's more. Not more?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Okay, we got some awards. Award certificates. Joanne Schimiller, principal of Irwin Elementary.
It's been a pleasure. We stand in the front.
Yeah, if you don't mind, we'll just wrap around. Josatari, principal of Warren Storeford Elementary School. Dr. Nairi Delgado, principal of Rock.
Oh, those are pretty. How are y'all?
Peter D. Bernardi, principal of Lawrencebrook Elementary.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all, thank you.
Dr. Michael Gaskell, principal of Central Elementary. Thanks, Mike.
Glad you took off the pants.
Because of their coach. Kristen Gerstino, principal of Bowman Row Elementary. Cheryl Jones, principal of Memorial. Tatiana McBride, principal of Chittick Elementary School. I don't think she's with us tonight because she's on leave. But we have Rachel Solomon, who's acting principal at Chittick Elementary. Russ Petronko, principal of Hammer Shuld Upper Elementary School. No, you don't get toms. Tom Husar, assistant principal, Hammer Shuld Upper. Inak Naimichi, assistant principal. Matt Hannes, principal of Churchill. Jennifer Cunningham, assistant principal, Churchill Junior High School. Alexia DeLuca, assistant principal at Churchill Junior High School. Ian Ivanovich, principal, assistant principal at Churchill Junior High School. Dr. Ed Bishore, principal of East Brunswick High School. Erica de la Santos, assistant principal, East Brunswick High School. Len Pazinko, assistant principal, East Brunswick High School. And I'm sorry, Chris, because of your name, Christian Azzo, assistant principal, East Brunswick High School. I'm gonna try to get a picture.
We're gonna swish. Stand sideways like a bridal party.
Really sideways.
Really sideways.
said about all of you. Thank you for 11 and a half years of support. I appreciate it. I apologize, I just wanted to say thank you for, first of all, the beautiful proclamation, but also the anecdotes, your support, we are grateful for it. So on behalf of the principals and Supervisors Association, thank you for the proclamation, thank you for the support.
All right, that moves us to some of the best parts of being on the Board of Education. First, we have our student representatives' report. Jane, we are so happy to see you.
Thank you. Happy to see you as well. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. It's always a pleasure to be here. Congratulations to our principals and administrators. The school couldn't run without you. Your partnership and support make all the difference in helping us create the kind environment where students can grow, lead, and thrive. I have a few exciting updates and events to share with you, so let's jump right in. First, a big thank you to our Walk to School Safety ambassadors who hosted their first event of the year last Wednesday, October 9. We had over 30 elementary students and their families participate, and it's truly a heartwarming way to kick off the school year. This coming Saturday, we're proud to host the 42nd Annual Marching Band Competition right here at our school. It's an incredible tradition, we'll be welcoming 18 high school bands from across the region. Our own EB marching band will also perform. Doors open at 9:15 and performances begin at 4:30 p.m. All are welcome in 10 and cheer on those hard-working performers. Words from a senior, Michael, I'm always excited to perform, but the home show is different. We get to play for an enthusiastic crowd on our home field, and you just feel excited and appreciated as every last person around you is cheering for your band. It's a really amazing feeling. Homecoming is right around the corner, and I'm super excited. Students will be busy decorating the halls and participating in our Spirit Week. Just a reminder, Community Pass tickets must be purchased by tomorrow, so please help to spread the word. For our students in grade 10 and 11, the PSAT will be administered on October 28th. Meanwhile, seniors will attend their senior seminar that day. It'll be a half-day, giving students some time to reflect on life after high school or maybe just to take a nap. I support both. Friday, October 24th, we'll host our Spirit Rally during the school day, followed by the big homecoming game that evening. We're encouraging everyone to wear pink in honor of Press Cancer Awareness Month. It's a meaningful way for our community to come together in support for an important cause. We sold over 1,600 Pink Out shirts, and we're hoping everyone is decked out in all pink. Our first-ever Tricks and Treats event is coming up soon, and it's going to be a thriller night. This family-friendly celebration will feature over 40 different activities for kids pre-K through 4th, and our high school clubs are thrilled to be hosting. It's shaping up to be a fun and festive day. Looking ahead to November 18th, we'll be introducing a new format for the Anderson Bowl, a coed-flag football tournament with 16 teams. As our fall sports seasons begin to wrap up, many of the teams are celebrating Senior Night, a fun tradition that makes us feel a little nostalgic. I had my own senior night recently, and I can tell you, it's a special milestone that stays with you. Over in the arts, our music program continues to shine, and our chorus is hosting Coffee House tonight, where students showcase their talent and creativity. Lastly, we're continuing to offer teacher-led tutoring every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday after school. Support is available in all core subjects, and it's open to all high school students. Thank you, and as always, to our board, parents, administrators, for your support, enthusiasm, and commitment to our school community. We truly cannot do it without you.
All right, and now, although fire prevention is so important, and we're so grateful, and the principals are amazing, and we appreciate and applaud you, this is the best part. All right, we have learning across the district from Irwin Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Legori, I am the PEP Chair for the East Brunswick Education Association. The East Brunswick Education Association is proud to present our first learning across the district tonight, featuring Irwin School. Learning across the district is part of our NJEA Public Education Partnership Grant. Each year, we are awarded approximately $36,600 from NJEA to sponsor community-based activities such as this event, EB Day, the Winter Wonderland, Educator Signing Day, Staff Award Celebration, the Butterfly Kindness Effect, the East Brunswick Business Day activity, the EBEF Bear Crawl, the student t-shirts for the kids' races, the VFW support, and the senior citizen support, the EB Fire Department, and more. Additionally, we also receive an additional $36,600 for our NJEA FAST, that's Family and Schools Work Together for Children. Some of the learning activities we sponsored are the Math Discovery Night, Coding Night, Mozart Fest, International Literacy Night, Remarkable Reading for kindergarten and first grade, Pre-K Have You Seen My Lion, second-grade Soggy Foggy Campout, and the Splash Bash, which is one of our favorite events for our special education students. Our teachers apply for these grants, and the EBA purchases learning materials and other supporting materials, food supplies, to help make these events successful. Thank you to all the teachers who wrote the grants and to all the students and parents for participating. The EBA is proud to provide a total of $73,200 in grant money to our community and schools last year, and this year will be no different. So I'd like to introduce, and the students are really eager to present to you tonight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you to EBEA for procuring this grant every year. I know, I think I speak on behalf of all my fellow principals, that any opportunity that we have so that you can see how awesome we think our students are, and know they are, is a great opportunity. So my fourth graders are here tonight to talk to you about my favorite subject, which is social studies, and if you remember, when you were in fourth grade in New Jersey, then you learned... And if you remember, when you were in fourth grade in New Jersey, then you learned about New Jersey history. That's what the predominant theme of the curriculum is. But when you learned about it, you probably had to take a test where you just memorized all the county names, and, you know, you had to be able to write it all on a map. But the way our students are learning about New Jersey history is through what we call Discovery Zones. And Discovery Zones are group-based projects that are completely student-led. They're created by our wonderful fourth-grade teachers, but each group has a topic that they research and find out about, and then they present to their peers what they learned about. So tonight, they're going to be presenting to you about New Jersey's regions. So I'm happy to have our fourth graders from Irwin School come on up and join me.
In social studies, we became New Jersey travel agents. We learned all about the regions of New Jersey. Specifically, me and Madison are travel agents for the Atlantic Coastal Plains region.
This project was done by researching the four regions of New Jersey using our social studies textbooks and Chromebooks. We worked together to build our travel brochure to try to convince people to want to visit our region.
We researched in our textbooks and used our Chromebooks for additional information. We were looking for interesting facts about the Highlands region.
Specifically, we researched about location, climate, landforms, resources, and fun facts for our region.
We used all the research and worked together to create our brochure.
Ian did most of the drawing and coloring while I did the writing and tracing.
We worked together to make sentences that describe why you should live in the Piedmont region of New Jersey.
We hope you like our brochures.
So for our first section of our brochure, we have location and climate. So we wrote down our climate and also drew a picture of where the Highlands is. We wrote down their climate and the Highlands. Overall, we have hotter climates, because their land is leveled up higher than ours.
Information resources, landforms, valleys, forests, mountains, bodies of water. Resources, minerals, rocks, flashstones, crops. Most common tree types, red maple and northern red oak.
In the region of Piedmont, there are cliffs up to four hundred fifty feet tall next to the Atlantic River, called the Palisades.
Piedmont is the most populated region in New Jersey, and half of Trenton, as well as other populated cities, are all in.
Piedmont means foothills.
The MetLife Stadium, Red Bull Arena, the American Dream Mall are all here as attractions.
Location. The Atlantic Coastal Plains are found south in New Jersey and covers about half the state. And also, the Atlantic Coastal Plain is not very high above sea level, because it used to be on the bottom of the seafloor.
The Atlantic Coast, landforms and waterways, the Atlantic Coastal Plains landforms include plenty of wetlands and a lot of beaches. The Delaware River goes along that Atlantic Coastal Plain.
Come on, scholars.
Very nice job, everybody.
All right. At this time, I want to thank our students for being here. That was phenomenal. It is the best part about being on the Board, is getting to see these presentations and our amazing students. But at this time, I would like to call a brief recess to let our youngest audience members perhaps go home. So we'll call a brief recess, and we will be right back. All right, we are back. And I felt very disappointed when I watched a very small person when I said we were in a brief recess, looked so excited because they thought there was going to be a recess. No, honey, you just get to go home, but there was disappointment there. All right, next up, we have.
Sorry. Is it okay if I just make some comments before we start? For the good of the cause, I know it's unusual, but given recent events and the way that my phone blew up yesterday, I'd like a chance to.
I think we should hold that for the good of the cause for the Board.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. All right. For the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of importance, of allowing members of the public, oh, sorry, and community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board. Each person is allowed three minutes. The Board's secretary will keep the time. If you step up, if you could give your name and address, unless you're a student, in which case just your name and your grade, we would appreciate it. Is there anyone here wishing to address the Board? Come up next. Thank you.
Jack Levitt for Springfield Road. I am the Chair of the East Brunswick Education Foundation. Here to tell you that, two things. First, we had two meetings so far this year. We gave away twenty grants totaling just under thirty-seven thousand dollars. So we are off to a good start heading toward our fourth million, four million dollar. In order to do that, we raised money throughout the year with various events. And our next big event coming up is the EB Bear Crawl. And I checked our registrations, and we have one Board Member and one Superintendent signed up. I'm wondering if there's gonna be more. I hope there will be more. We have nine out of eleven schools with teams, faculty teams, as well as a bunch of students. So I'm looking forward to seeing all of you there that day, running, walking, crawling, biking, whatever you choose to do, and always supporting EBEF. And finally, happy birthday, Dr. Bulleye.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brandon Rucker. I am from Rutgers University. Here on assignment, but also, first and foremost, I'm also East Brunswick alumni. So happy to.
I'm sorry, we just need your address, just your street address.
Street address. Oh, Seltin Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so my one question I have here is for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. What are your numbers from last year compared to this year?
This is the time when the public can come and speak to the Board, and we have to listen. We don't do a question-and-answer back and forth, so we can put you with somebody to talk to after.
If you actually see one of the ladies with her hands up right there. We gave a presentation about this, so we'll be able to provide you real-time data by connecting with those ladies right there.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close the public portion. All right, this leads us to our first item, or our first Agenda Items, Curriculum and Instruction. Items one through, oops, seven. Can I have a motion, please? Move.
Second.
All right. Jamie and Wilbur. All right, discussion? Just one through seven for Curriculum and Instruction. No discussion?
I just want to mention some of these items are for the drama club, and I can say from personal experience that these folks do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
I also just want to say I'm excited to see some of these spring performances. And also, for number six, the Minding Our Children LLC. I've seen George Scott speak before. I know he's done presentations before for the school, and I just encourage parents that are able to go. The presentation is gonna be entitled "When You Are Worried About Your Child", on January 12th at 7:00. And I think it's great for the district and parents to be able to talk about children and their well-being together, and I just encourage people to attend.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, this is a voice vote, right? All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? All right, motion carries. Moving on, we are up to Business and Support Operations, Items one through... Eighteen? Eighteen. Can I have a motion, please? All right, Lori?
Second.
And Wilbur? All right, discussion?
Yeah.
It's a lot. Oh, go ahead, Wilbur. We always go to Wilbur last.
So I just had a few basic questions. So the first two on the bill list, I know there's a reason for this. I just couldn't remember. But when I was looking at the list of payments to Delta Dental, the range of payments seemed to be quite wide, going from like eleven dollars and sixty cents up to seventy-two thousand. So I know there's a reason for it. Can you remind me what it is?
So we received the monthly bill. That's the larger bill. And then there's administrative. We also receive it based off of coverage, so it's broken out. So that's how we process it. So depending on who's getting what services and.
So presumably eleven sixty is for toothbrushes or something.
Dental costs.
Yeah, yeah. Second question is on the item for Activa. There are two lines for five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which totals to one point one million total. As we know, this is always a big impact on our budget. I just wanted to check, is this one point one million for the entire school year? And the second question is, we know that changes happen. Is there a time that we can expect changes?
Can you tell me what page?
Oh, sorry. That I didn't put down. Apologies.
While Wilbur's looking for that, I'd just like to remark that for item fourteen, the donation from the Horowitz family, I appreciate their thoughtfulness in supporting our arts program.
Joe, it's page fourteen on the bill list, payments pending issuance. So that's item number four.
Page fourteen, you said?
Fourteen, yeah.
Thank you. Just one second as I get there. So the one million dollar payment to Hattipah?
Yeah, one point one.
So this is for October and November, so this is the new payment schedule for the current year. And it is, it did go up. I'd say it was like five hundred thousand dollars overall for the year compared to the prior year.
Right, right. So my question was, my understanding is that Activa can actually change this value at some point during the year. Do we have any idea?
It's based off of enrollment. So right now, we do the October fifteenth count, which the report's not doing until the beginning of December. So if their enrollment went up, we get adjusted to their actual. And then at the end of the year, they also do another enrollment report. So if it goes down, so there's a possibility it might go up. It's all based off of enrollment of East Brunswick students.
Okay, great, thanks. Last question's on the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. It looks like that the anticipated changes from the twenty-five, twenty-six year to the twenty-seven...
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven year are all pretty small, especially if you compare the jumps from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six. How solid are these numbers?
It's a guesstimate. It's a two percent increase. Obviously, we're working on the budget. We don't know where we're gonna stand. This is a state-required report. I wouldn't put much reliance into anything on that report, because it reports last year's expenditures. Those numbers are the numbers, right? This current year is based off of budget. It's only October, and next year is to be determined. And also, take note on the first page of the M1. It says like a hundred and forty-three dollars per square foot for construction, which is grossly understated. So it's a state requirement that we comply with, but that really doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have to approve it.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Appreciate the clarifications.
Anyone else there?
Yes. I have a question on contract for all car towing and recovery. Is this something that's a real issue for us in the district that we need to employ them or work with them? I noticed it says something about a hundred dollars per sign that we have to pay. Are there any other costs to the district? And I'm just wondering, you know, what this is about.
So over the years, we've had vehicles that have been left on our property, especially during snowstorms where they've been plowed in, and it becomes, you know, a safety issue for people plowing. And then, you know, it slows us down and incurs us more cost to remove the snow. So we went out to bid a couple times, didn't find anybody bidding, so we contracted with them. The cost is the signs. That's a one-time fee. And then any cost to tow and store the vehicle would be on the owner of the vehicle. So hopefully, that won't be the case, but it allows us to have that option.
So this is an issue? This is something we've had issues with?
We've encountered it several times over the past several years.
How did we handle it in the past, just out of curiosity?
The cars got.
Plowed around.
Plowed around?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Dr. Figaro, just to clarify, this is to expedite, just the removal of the vehicle, just to expedite recovery of the parking lot and things like that, but typically during.
So the signs will be posted at the different schools?
Yes.
For this?
Yeah, at each location. It's not so much of an issue here, but assuming the twelve locations, support ops is not an issue. But definitely the eleven schools.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mary?
So on Agenda Item Nine, Business and Support Operations, I'm on page... The page numbers are a little weird, but it's page five for the Title One, Part A.
On Item Nine?
Item Nine. Page five. I mean, the page numbers are numbered weird, because it's not really.
Sorry. This report has five sections or four sections to it. So on the bottom left-hand corner, does it say like NJSEC three, NJSEC one?
NJSEC two, short V two.
And page five, you said?
Yeah, for the Title One.
Okay.
So for the unrealized, can you just explain what happens there?
All right. So without getting too into the weeds of the accounting, the Special Revenue Fund works a little bit different. So we recognize the revenue based off of what we spend. The balance of what we don't spend is unrealized. So the, take the second line there, that's the 2025 award. It was one point one million. We had expenditures of eight hundred and one thousand. So that becomes the revenue, revenue you recognize, the actual. The balance was not spent, so it's unrealized. We carry that over. So it's here, it's in hand. Well, actually, we're entitled to it. We didn't draw down. But we haven't spent it. We're entitled to spend it, so we get to carry it over one year. That's how the title grants work. There's a one-year extension. So it goes almost into a reserve to sit there and wait. And this is common, that we have carryover, because some programs take place in the summer, and then the balance carries over, and it goes on from there.
Okay, but do we know what it's gonna be used for?
I mean.
Because we're asked to vote on something.
It would be identified in the grant already, correct?
So where is that?
Right, so the grant was.
Sorry, so, no, go ahead.
The grant application was already approved. That was approved last August or September.
Of 2024?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that, the state or the federal government releases the grant applications when we're within the year, that makes it challenging, that's why there is a carryover.
Okay.
There's a lot of times we don't get notified what our award is until after we start the year.
Okay.
So the board approved the application back then and the application identifies what we're spending, what the basis is, there's various requirements that we have to meet that goes through the approval process at the state level, the federal level, and then we also have to report on what we're spending. And there are times it's subject to our annual audit, if we're fortunate enough to be selected for a Title One audit from the state, so there's checks and balances along the way. Like, we couldn't say in the application, we're going to pay partial salary to five teachers and then go buy, you know, or redo the football field with the money.
Okay.
It's very regulated.
So I actually have a question on that because I emailed about this, that we, at the August of this year board meeting, we were told that nine out of our 11 schools are Title One schools and that statement is actually not entirely accurate, we're receiving Title One funds, we are not Title One school-wide programs. So I want to make sure, is the Title One funding being used for the Title One students only?
It's for the Title One schools and you're correct.
No, no, we don't have any Title One schools, so let's clarify that. East Brunswick has zero Title One schools.
There are a number of our schools that receive Title One funding.
But it doesn't make us a Title One school?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
So the verbiage does become very important.
Particular, yes, of course.
So there, the funds, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Bolley, the funds are not directed only to the students, it's to the school.
But it should not be, if we are not a Title One school, we're not a Title, we don't have any Title One schools, is that statement correct? We have nine schools...
We have no school-wide programs.
Correct, so we have nine schools that are receiving Title One funds that we can't call ourselves Title One schools, that's like saying we receive STEM funding, we can't call ourselves a STEM school.
Yes.
So those funds, according to state regulations, correct me if I'm wrong, are supposed to go directly to the students that are impacted by Title One, free and reduced students only. Correct?
Yes, it's supporting the students, yes.
No, supporting just those students. Correct?
That is correct.
So is that how the money is being allocated? Because I can't find that anywhere.
I mean, there are a lot of lines in the application, some are offsetting some of the staffing positions in the building.
Okay, so that's my second question. According to the regulations, those funds are not supposed to be used to supplant, they can only supplement, so why are we using them for salaries that existed anyway?
There is a whole calculation that we have to do to prove that we're not, you know, supplanting versus supplementing and that is something when, especially when the state comes in and does a Title One audit, they're looking at, there's a calculation, formula-based process.
Okay.
So you're absolutely right, we cannot take the district's responsibility and put that on to the grant, we're supposed to be supplementing it, enhancing to get those funds to where they need to be.
Okay, but how can we see, yeah, exactly, why can't we see where, that it's directed to those, I don't want to see who the students are, it's just, how do we ensure that it's going to those students only because it sounds like someone was under the impression that we had Title One schools here.
If I could, Dr. Tanis, I think, and I agree with you, we internally have had a conversation, there was a correction based on your feedback and your information, that we're not referring to them, we no longer refer to them as Title One schools, they are schools receiving Title One funds.
Right.
So that's a clarification and a correction we're making internally in our communication. Our applications for the grants are scrutinized and they're audited at a variety of levels, both at the federal level and our internal auditors look at them as well, right? So there are, there are, there's a lot of oversight into what goes into those grants and how those funds are used.
But Dr., sorry, Dr. Valeski, those, when those auditors come, they're not asking to see which students that money is going towards, so I'm asking, where is the oversight to ensure that this money is being used only for our Title One students because I don't want to make it so that our most vulnerable students are not getting what they need.
Can I just make one clarification?
Yes.
The Title One funds are also for basic skills, it's not just low-income students.
Right, but how are you ensuring that regardless?
So the, again, Dr. Bolley, correct me if I'm wrong, but the salaries that we allocate are for basic skills teachers or supplemental, you know, an additional push-in teacher to address the basic skills.
Okay, but like last time, in the September 18 agenda, we voted on an item that was for salaries for Title One and some of them I have no, I'm questioning what interaction they have with students in general, so that wasn't clear and that vote was made under the pretense that we have Title One schools, which we don't.
Is it possible, just a suggestion, but is it possible to have like the, one of the grant applications and maybe like the auditor's report available so that perhaps, you know, you could have an opportunity to sit down, look at those documents and kind of see if there's X amount of students who qualify for the funds, how the grant like kind of requires that, is that, would that like be helpful, like illustrative to see like, here's the grant requirements, here's the amount of students who qualify, here's the auditor's report, like, I don't know if that would be helpful.
A reconciliation, you mean?
Yeah, so if I may, just based on it, I think, and Dr. Tanis makes some very good points, is it possible for us to get more information on that? Because I think it's critical that we look at and see where that money is going and making sure that our students are, our most, as Dr. Tanis said, you know, our students that the money is budgeted for is, it's going in that direction. And this is not to say that we're not doing that, it's just that, so that way we are sure across the board, you know, that we're doing the right thing for all of our kids.
From, I can only speak from the financial side, like, yeah, we can provide the application, it's not going to be pretty because the state has a grant application software that you can't print from, so it'll be print screens and copy paste, so we can do that.
You can walk me through it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
But my main concern is that a statement was made that we have nine Title One schools, so I just want to make sure that the money is being funded the way it's supposed to because if we had nine Title One schools, that means we could use it for the entire school and we shouldn't be doing that and I just want to make sure that's, that's not what's happening, is it?
No, the verbiage definitely has been misused by us.
Thank you, okay.
Because we are not a Title One district, but we allocate Title One funds to those schools, so I think internally, that's just what we say, but you're correct, the application, there's two options and we don't qualify, we don't have 40% free and reduced at any school, although we do have 25%, 28% at some schools, which, you know, is on the rise. But yeah, I think that's a very valid point that we have to correct our language, so it's accurate.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And if I could, if we could walk through that, Mr. Kochveld, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cold in here.
Anyone else? Leave it.
I have multiple questions, so please. I have multiple questions, please stay with me for the item number five, the comprehensive maintenance play. So for this year and the next year, we budgeted $2.206 per square foot for every building, no matter how old the building is, and for '26-'27, we budgeted $2.2507 for each square foot. But when I look at the '24-'25 actual cost, so every building is different, for example, the high school, we spend $1.836 per square foot and for the Churchill, we spend $1.64 per square foot and the Hammershuld, $1.86. So my question is, when we do the budget, we very, just set the number for every square foot, if the unused budget, where would it go? And if surprisingly, we need more extra money for one school's roof, so where can we get the budget? So this is for item number five.
All right. Would you like me to?
Sure.
So it's important to know that the number is broken down by school, when we do the budget, it's at the, we budget at the school level, but it's reported at the district level, all the, per the state chart of accounts. So if Bound is less, but Chittick is more, it, you know, it's a collective money that's moved. You know, some schools have more events going on, the high school is very active, Hammershuld is very active because we're renting out, Churchill is active, but not to that extent. You know, they don't have the amount of clubs, the activity, so that does increase the custodial cost, the cleaning cost, so those are factors. And again, I would just advise the board to not put too much credence into the '26-'27 number because we have not developed the budget, it is just a 2% increase off of the current budget, all right, because we do have to report something per state requirement.
So you just simply set up the number, put it there and then when there's extra cost, so you allocate the money to, for different buildings, is that what you are trying to say?
Yeah, I believe that the right way to look at it is that the custodial cost for, you know, salaries is aligned, if we have a maintenance contract, has the district holding account and then it is allocated across. Off the top of my head, we did not exceed that budget, so we didn't have to tap into anything else, you know, to clean our buildings, it was properly budgeted.
So if there's any surplus unused budget, where would this unused budget go?
It goes to other areas that might need it, if the overall budget in total has excess fund balance, it goes into fund balance and then depending on the calculation, it would go as a budgeted fund balance to offset the tax levy in a future year.
Okay, thank you. So let's go to the item number 12.
Off the agenda, Mr. Hung?
Yeah, so the item 12 of Business and...
Okay, okay, thank you. Student Transportation Services.
Yeah, for the community program.
Not the, item two or 10, I'm sorry.
No, 12, one, two.
12, 12, okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, number 12. So for the community program.
That's 13.
Did everyone get it?
No, that's the...
Item 13, right, Mr. Hung, item 13, community programs.
Is it the enterprise financials or the...
Is it enterprise?
No, he's looking at item 12.
Yeah, item 12, there are multiple parts. Okay, inside the package, there's a community programs, profit and loss statement.
Yes.
There's an interest, $72,772 for the, for the about $1 million, the cash value. So that's a very significant amount, but when I look at other items, I never see any interest. We have, for certain account, we have multiple million dollars. So where are those money parked, in which bank and do we own any extra interest from those accounts, those assets? Let me go to before the detail, okay, if we go to agenda 11. So there's a balance, it's almost $80 million, there's, I want to know if this $80 million produce any interest.
Yes, we, our banking structure is set up where we have an interest-bearing account, so if community programs has a cash balance, the interest earned is allocated to them, just same way with child nutrition. We have multiple funds, the general fund, special revenue fund, we have nothing in our capital, no activity, and then the debt service, so interest that is earned is allocated throughout, but we, all of our excess funds are in an interest-bearing account.
So why there's no showing for the income as the interest, just like the item 12, the community program?
I'm, I'm, sorry, can you just say that again?
So I just point out, for the community programs, there's more than $70,000 interest showing as the income. For other account, so we have a multiple million dollars parking there and why there's no income showing on the statement?
The income is up top on the community programs, you have tuition and then you have interest on investment. This current year was $66,000, last year it was $72,000, there wasn't...
Yes, that's why I appreciate that, but if we go to other items, let's, for example, item agenda number nine, the monthly certificate, certification and a budgetary item, so there's, we have multiple million dollars parking there and in the asset or any income, why there's no interest for those?
So on, if you go to the, on the bottom left-hand corner, the NJSEC number two report and it is page one, interest on investment, we earned this past year $1.1 million?
So the entire...
You're looking at the balance sheet, the balance sheet would not reflect the revenue?
So I, the reason why I'm asking this question is, I spoke with board members in Edison Township every year, they move their money in a high interest earning account, they got multiple, multiple million dollars, those interests actually help them expand the building, classroom, everything. So that's something I suggest, our finance department should do the same, try to use the current money, let them make more money, the interest for us. When we anticipate a more budgetary cutting, so any interest in, should be million dollars, it's very precious, that's what we should go.
And valid point, but I believe Edison received a windfall of state aid and I think they have like $30 million sitting in their capital reserve account, we don't have the same cash balance, that's very important, like, I don't want anybody to think that we're not trying to maximize our interest, but it is a little bit unfair to compare us to another district not knowing what their cash balance is.
Okay, so since you talked about the reserve account, what's the balance for our reserve account?
Which, which one? Our capital reserve is down to very little, a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think.
No, the state required minimum 2%, how come we only got hundreds, $100,000?
I was referring to the capital reserve account, we are at, we have our 2% excess, but...
Okay, 2%, let's say we have $200 million budget, so 2% we will have about $4 million. So where is this $4 million, how much interest does it generate?
But it, that 4 million is a component of the balance sheet, all cash, right, on, there are times, and if you recall to previous times, I get up and talk about the audit report and the balances, I do show the cash, you know, that we have at the end of the year. Over the years, we might have at the end of the year, $50 million in all of our bank accounts, but, you know, it fluctuates throughout the year. All of that money is in interest-bearing accounts. Now, that doesn't mean $50 million is, you know, that benchmark across the whole year. You know, there are times, depending, you know, summer is a little bit more because we're not paying staff, right? But then we have payments, we have our bond payments, our lease purchase payments that impact our cash balances, but all of our cash are, that's available, that's sitting in our accounts are earning interest.
Okay, I suggest you should make a detailed statement, at least share with the board members, we need to watch out, you know, it's very important to, for us to maximize whatever we have. I can, I'm going to call you, you know, for further answer, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Can I ask for a clarification of Mr. Hung's request? Are you, Mr. Hung, are you asking for a special report or identification in our current financials of where that investment, interest is earned?
So any, as, any cash in, parking in the account, at least I want to know, is there in the interest-bearing account and how much we get from it? Accumulatively, I believe we should have very significant income from the interest only.
All right, any other discussion?
Just to that point, all right, Ms., um, Mr. Kroschfeld, are the interest rates standard for schools? So I think that's part of Mr. Hung's question, is, is there some sort of like high-yield interest account that Edison is investing in?
And I don't know. School districts are limited to what they can invest in, because obviously, we can't invest in anything that's risky, that will lose the taxpayers' money. So the, our current setup with our bank is, we have a compensating balance. So typically, in today's market, uh, there's fees for everything. Cash a check, you make a deposit, there's a fee, right?
Right.
So we don't pay those fees. It's called compensating balances.
Right, right.
And then the interest rate, and we're always, uh, in communication with our, our bank to ensure that we're receiving, you know, a legit rate. But, uh, there's not that much fluctu- fluctuation. And like, if, if the prime rate is four percent, you know, we're not getting five.
Yeah.
You know, but I'm making sure we're not getting three, you know?
Mr. Hung's question is, how is Edison able to do this? Perhaps next week, since it's school boards, maybe like a discussion can be had, and, hey, guys, what are you doing?
I, I, I can just tell you, they, they do have more cash on hand, but I don't know what they're investing.
I'm sorry, forget about Edison. You know, every year, every month, we had EBEF meeting. The treasury report, how much interest we earned for the money they have. As the number is now small, most of the time it's five figures. That is the way we should explore at this challenging time.
Um, so if I could ask a question, a clarification question. So is the board asking for a specialized report that reflects our interest income?
At least I want to.
Mr. Kroschfeld, is that possible?
I, I, I can, I don't know if it's going to meet your needs without knowing what exact, no, no, I'm, I'm, I can't see. That's all, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just looking in that direction. So, uh, without knowing exactly what you want to see, I mean, we can have a follow-up conversation.
I really think, please correct me if I'm wrongly, but I think his question is, are we making sure that the interest that we're getting from the bank is the maximum possible interest? And he's asking, why is another district able to do this? I understand what you're saying, but I guess there's no harm in just asking them, how, how are you able to do this? You know? I think part of, um, you know, being in this budget situation that we're all in is tapping into each other and seeing, hey, can, what, what are you doing that we should be doing, and vice versa, like cohesion.
And I, I can assure the board that, from time to time, uh, the banking business is put out for, for bid, correct?
It, it's for the, the core business function, that, that's been a while, like, you know, our, our payroll account and our AP account. But yeah, we are constantly looking at, at the rates and, and communication.
And the best deals that we can get for the district.
Um, you know, it.
Why I'm such a big deal? So look at this, the same item. Tw- this community programs only twenty-twenty-four audit result. The entry is more than seventy, almost seventy-three thousand.
Correct.
So that's why, you know, they don't have too much money. They said is the, the balance. The, the total income is three point six million tuition, and then that tuition generate almost seventy-three thousand dollars interest. That is very significant amount. If we have millions of dollars at the reserve or in any account, we, we should go after, try to get more. Well, I'm going to call you again. So I, I, I need more, if, if the board policy allowed, I'm going to talk to you, Jill, for, for more.
Jill, we need a, a special session.
Be careful what you wish for. Like, I will put you all asleep for a while.
I'm not trying to cause a problem to you, Jill. It's this special time. Uh, we're, 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 we're going to do the budget very quickly. We, we, we have to be very serious about this. You know, that's, that's, you know, if, I'm not going to compare with it, I'm not trying to compare with the apple and orange. So the reason why I mentioned Edison School District is, if we can utilize this tool, so we can do a lot of good things. You know, when we, I remember last, last year, so when we cut one position is a few thousand dollars to reduce the bus route, it's hard. And if we can make thou- hundreds of thousands of dollars interest, that will help us a lot.
Agreed. I, I think we, I'll talk to Mr. Kroschfeld. We will talk, we will look at, what I would propose is maybe a mock-up report, showing the board, and then seeing if it meets your needs, and it can be modified at some point in the future.
Yes, I want.
And especially during budget development, you could use it as a tool to, to be able to guide some of your decisions.
So you can mark, you can redact the account number, the account code, but I want to know the balance, and which institute it is staying, and how much interest we get from last year.
All right. Do we need more clarification, or are we on the right track? Okay.
I'm just, I'm going to start looking this way.
It's, it's, it's very hard from the center sometimes.
I, I think.
Any other question area?
Sorry, you look this way.
No, I figured we weren't, I figured we weren't quite there.
I think, so if I remember correctly, and I feel like it was right when Dr. Pan came on last year, Mr. Giuliani did, he broke us, we had groups in time, so we could meet virtually, and we went over some of these items, and what the words meant, and, and just kind of broke it down for people that had questions that were probably helpful when we receive items, or our agendas, and our budgets, and going, going into budget season. And I think the ultimate need is that, as a board, I think we want to just be well-informed. Like, we just want to know what, what questions we can have, that we can answer, to help people in the public. But I think, um, and ultimately, I was going to suggest this at the end during open comment, but I think having the opportunity, whether it be you or somebody else, just stand up there and say, like, these are the words that we use when we talk about Title I funds, and this is what it means. This is the words that we use when we talk about this in the budget, right, our capital reserves, what it can be used for, what it can't. And I know that last budget season, we started that, and we wanted people to be more aware of what the breakdown is and what it means. I think we need to continue that. I think we need to work on it, so people have more like of an awareness, and it's across the board, and it's shared. That's what I think. That's where I think we're going. And as for interest, like, yes, I'm sure that schools carry different amounts, depending on their increase or decrease in student, in, in aid, in state aid, and what can be carried over and what can't. And I think it provides us the opportunity next week, when we're at school boards, to ask people to. And so, we will, and we'll report back to you, too. But we'll see you there, too.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Hannah Bron.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figaro.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hung.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Mary Antanos.
Yes.
Heather Gwos.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to special education and student services. Oh, I'm sorry, human resources, went to the bottom of the page. Human resource, resources, personal actions. It's just one item. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second. All right, Wilbur then Lori. Um, discussion?
Uh, I'll just say quickly, I think it's important to note, from the perspective of where we sit, that there's a major change upcoming. For those in the community who are not aware, um, that our assistant superintendent, Mr. Giuliani, is also retiring. I think it's okay to share that. Um, and I think it's important that we share that news. So, um, you know, between Dr. Valeski and Mr. Giuliani, I think I heard that he's around thirty-one years in the district. Dr. Valeski, close to twelve. That's a collective, you know, forty-three years of experience, uh, that will be leaving the district within about four months of each other. Um, that's significant for us as a community. That's very significant. And, um, we have to move forward. I have every confidence in our incoming superintendent, and am delighted, and know that she will lead us, uh, in the right direction. So I'm happy about that. But, you know, it is important that we acknowledge this change and, uh, prepare for it appropriately. So, just want to point that out.
All right. So, um, I agree with what Mr. Cummings just said. However, all of our personnel here are important and valuable. I just feel like this one should not have been a line item on an agenda respectfully. Um, the board should have been made aware of this, because this is a significant change. And I, I would appreciate that moving forward when it's such a enormous position, that we are made aware well in advance.
I found out when you found out.
I, I didn't say you, Heather.
Look, you're looking at me.
Yeah, well, I'm.
I'm, so I, I'm trying to figure out how to navigate this, Francis. Um, Mr. Giuliani is not rice tonight. Um, I, I, I believe you're going to have to have a conversation with him directly.
So, because he's not rice, we shouldn't.
No, no.
It's not about Mr. Giuliani. This is about in general. Like, I think that sometimes when it's a, when it's like such a significant role, um, all of our, all of our educators are valuable, our teachers, our staff, our aides, everybody is valuable to this district. But when it's a position that's this significant, moving forward, I, I would appreciate if the board would be made aware. This isn't directed towards Mr. Giuliani.
I understand.
In general, okay. There was, there's no need to rice anybody. That, that was just a statement, Dr. Valeski, about.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
And I agree with, uh, Mary Ann. So the, the school district has two most important positions. Number one, superintendent. Number two, business administrator. So in such, anything bigger, like that scale, the board should be notified. Should let board people know there's huge changes coming. We don't need to be specified. Since his name is on the agenda, so we, we got to know that when we receive the agenda. But it's such a big announcement. We, we, I, I really should, we should know it earlier.
Yeah, and, and I think also, if I may, uh, I think the timing is also important in this situation. Um, based on going into budget season, I think something like this, we should have been, we should have been aware of as soon as possible. Um, you know, not at what I consider the last minute. So, I do agree.
I just wanted to wish Bernie happy retirement. Being retired is awesome, and I'm genuinely happy for him. He can have a whole new, you know, career. Maybe he can run for school board in his hometown. So, congratulations, Bernie.
Anyone else?
All right, uh, this is a voice vote, yes?
Uh, roll call.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see that there. Oh, I'm sorry, it is. Roll call vote.
Hannah Bron.
Yes.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figaro.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Lee Wu-Hung.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Mary Antanos.
Yes.
Heather Gwos.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on now to special education and student services. Can I have a motion for items one through five?
Move. Second.
All right, Lori then Wilbur. All right, discussion?
Yes.
Lori.
So, um, really just some comments. And sorry, I'm going to take a minute. Um, under number one, nursing service plan and school nurses service report. I'm hoping that everybody on the board took a look at this, because this is amazing. I, like, went through, and I'm just going to read for a second. Uh, our school nurses are amazing. They promote health. This is all the jobs that they have. They promote health and safety. They, um, they work on assessing, planning, implementing, evaluating, um, nursing care in an ongoing matter, matter. They work on individualized healthcare plans, seizure action plans, asthma action plans, uh, infer, they seek information regarding health histories, practices, environmental concerns, safety issue, issues, communicable disease patterns. I, I mean, they consult with pa- parents, guardians, um, I could go on. I'm just trying to highlight some of this stuff. They serve as a counselor, the role of counselor to students, parents, and staff regarding health issues. Referrals are made to school psychologists, student assistant specialists, school counselors. Um, they educate staff. They provide parent education. And I went through, and I did, based on some of the schools, um, the number of health visits compared to the total number of school days. And there are some days in, like, you, the elementary schools, that we have like twenty-four visits per day. I mean, there's like over, for, what is this? This is chitik. So we have total visits to the health office, four thousand four hundred and forty in a hundred and eighty-day school year. So the work that they do is amazing. And, um, they serve not just as nurses, but as liaisons between staff and parents and students that have issues with, concerns with food insecurity and clothing. I know the nurses at the elementary schools keep extra clothes in case somebody needs to change, and they just think of all these things. And having to check all the food for the school parties, I remember from the elementary PTAs, and they're like, it's crazy. Um, so I just want to thank them, and I feel like this is the time that we get to do so, and, and just appreciate them, and, and thank them for, for just being that, that, that person there for them. So, thank you. That's it.
I agree. Anyone else, Luke?
Yes, just, uh, first of all, well said, Ms. Herrick. Thank you for, for saying that, because you're absolutely right. Everything you said, and more. And, and the more part of it is what you don't see in the data sheets. Um, our nurses are sometimes the, the first person that students want to go to in the morning, and sometimes the last person they want to see at the end of the day. Our nurses are social, emotional supports, um, along with our teachers, and our student assistant specialists, and, and our administrators. But our nurses are so critical to the, to what we do here in East Brunswick. Um, and, you know, I, I also want to, to, along with my colleagues, to say thank you to our nurses, um, to Daniel Blaylock, who is in charge of our nurses, and, and does such a great job. Uh, without you, again, as I said earlier, you know, about our, our principals, um, there are certain things that don't go on the data sheets that our people do so well. And our nurses are one of those, those people, those groups of people, that work so well with our students and our families, and we really can't thank you enough. So, we, we do, we do want to say thank you, and a good, big shout out to our nursing staff. Thank you.
Wilbur?
Um, so I can speak from, uh, personal experience, that there are two types of physicians, those who get along with and appreciate the nurses, and the dumb ones. So, um, but, uh, again, a lot has been said. Uh, you know, the thing that caught my eye is the list of medically complex students that our nurses help take care of. And this is, and, and these, this list is not insignificant at all. Um, we have, uh, kids with seizures, we have kids with cancer, we have kids with immunodeficiencies, cardiac, uh, disease, or, uh, organ transplant recipients. The, the list goes on and on and on. Um, it's a really impressive effort to be able to support, uh, these students as they, um, as, as they come to school every, uh, day, and my, my hats off, uh, to them for, uh, for fulfilling that role. Um, I did have one question in terms of the, uh, nursing policy, though. Um, sometimes when, uh, kids go on field trips, they're on multiple buses, um, and the nurse has the EpiPen. So what happens when a kid who needs an EpiPen is on one of the buses that the nurse is not on? Um, I don't know if anyone has the answer here, but I just wanted to raise that question.
I don't have the specific procedure, but.
I think they are on the same bus.
They are assigned to the same bus.
All right.
And, and you also have staff who are EpiPen-trained.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I was EpiPen-trained, so I had that kid's.
Yeah.
EpiPen.
Yeah, so, so where this came is, um, a while back, a parent asked me about that, because their, you know, kid had severe allergies, and, um, it was their impression that the nurse with the EpiPen was on one bus, but the kid was on, uh, on, on another. Um, so I just wanted clarification on that. And you can be EpiPen-trained, but unless you actually have the EpiPen there, right?
Yeah, they would.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they would give us whatever the pouch was.
Okay.
That, that we had.
All right.
So, and we knew who our student was.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Laura.
So when I look at the numbers, you know, I divide by one hundred and eighty days per year. So for almost every elementary school, they got one nurse, but they have minimum twenty-five visits every day, every day, school day. So it's amazing. So I agree with whatever my colleagues said, but I want especially thanks to our nurses. So when I look at what they did, it's everything. It's all-rounder for small things to big things, they're one single-handed in each school. So for the elementary school, we only have one certified nurse, full-time, no part-time, no clock. So the single-handed take care of our more than four thousand, five thousand elementary school students. Thank you. You guys are doing great job. Every day more than twenty-five visits for every school.
Anyone else?
All right. I wanted to go last here because with a certain amount of irony, I was reading these reports, and shortly thereafter, the school nurse called me. My youngest is very athletic and very talented and incredibly clumsy, and also deeply loving of the school nurse. And the part that really struck me in looking at these numbers and the number of visits and the number of responsibilities, and my child attends a very large elementary school, so I just feel like that number is amplified, is are the phone calls that I get reporting exactly what happened with my child, exactly what was done, and exactly how she was when she was sent back, every time. Even if it's not exactly in the moment, it's before the end of the school day. And I just marvel at the level of personal care each child receives, considering the weight of the job and the duties that go with it. And I am just very grateful, in specific to one of our school nurses, because I do believe my child is in her office at least twice a week, and she is still treated each time with the same care and seriousness. And I've yet to be told that it's annoying, so I'm just deeply appreciative. But this list really, like, I don't know how they do it. All right. It really is. This is a roll call vote.
Hannah Braun?
Yes.
Timothy Cumming?
Yes.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Louis Figaro?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes, but abstained from number five.
Thank you. Lee Wu Hung?
Yes.
Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
Mary Ann Tanios?
Yes.
Heather Gwass?
Yes. All right. Motion carries. We are up to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. Last night, I will just start, that I attended the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. Those meetings, by the way, are open to the public, and their dates should be published. But it is heartening to see the number of people from the community that come out to discuss the resources in the community, the parks. Part of the discussion last night was about how a park that was underutilized could perhaps better serve the kids in the community. Discussion of how Crystal Springs can best serve the community and meet its budgetary requirements. This meeting was short, and it was still well over an hour. So I just wanted to report back, not that there were any huge information items, but just a deep appreciation for the number of people in our community representing so many different groups that come out to talk about recreation, especially for our kids. So thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President, I move to discuss a vote of no confidence in board leadership.
Okay. That would need a second.
Well, second.
Okay. I would request before discussion, why?
It's come to this board's attention that there has been difficulties in communication and transparency. Those of us who sit up here are of equal standing to each other. So when business is conducted on our behalf and without our knowledge or consent, we believe that according to Robert's rules, we have the right to discuss a vote of no confidence.
What business are we referring to that was done on our behalf?
Madam President, there was an email sent from you, Heather Gwass. It was sent to the entire school district. I received it as a parent. I never audited or read it as a board member and had no knowledge of this emails to be sent. I feel that if we are a united cohesive board, and the NJSBA guidelines for presidency communication are minor communications, a major communication in which I statements are declarative, it seems like it is an overstep of your role.
It is true. Minor communications are allowed on my own judgment, but Dr. Valeski, do you want to explain here some?
Are we referring to specifically the announcement of the superintendent selection?
Among other things. A vote of no confidence is not the same as a censure. Yes, ma'am, but a vote of no confidence is not the same as a censure. I'm not seeking disciplinary action for this email. You asked me for an example. A vote of no confidence, according to Robert's rules, is a declarative statement of this board that we are dissatisfied with your leadership.
I was asking Dr. Valeski, though, to reply. You made a very direct statement about that email. I do agree with Robert's rules about going out on my own and only making minor statements, and I asked Dr. Valeski to expand on what happened there.
Ma'am, but we're debating the motion of no confidence because we have a second. That is for all of the board, and that's according to this, you cannot preside over this if it is in regards to you.
All right. Then that would go to the board secretary, no?
It either goes to board secretary or board vice president. It's vice president, right? Thank you.
So this is just a motion for a vote for no confidence?
Correct. A vote for no confidence, yes, ma'am.
There's discussion. There can be a discussion on the motion, and then there would have to be a vote.
Thank you. Yes. So I invite the board at this time to also voice their opinions, please.
I agree with what Dr. Falco said. I received an email as a parent that said, on behalf of this board, it had one signature on it, although to my recollection, there were eight of us who were involved in that process. Additionally, it was, you know, disheartening to receive that as a parent when I am an appointed official. And there have been numerous occasions where, as an appointed official, I feel that a lack of a response or an incomplete response has been an impediment in my ability to fulfill the duties of this role.
And again, I ask that Dr. Valeski, who is a non-voting member of the board...
But this has nothing to do with Dr. Valeski, respectfully, President Gwass. This has nothing to do with Dr. Valeski. This is in regards to a vote of no confidence in your leadership, not Dr. Valeski's, respectfully.
I am asking for Dr. Valeski to speak to a situation that you just said, or that Dr. Falco said, I had a part in that you felt was inappropriate or not the leadership that you wanted. Dr. Valeski has information to go with this as to why I did that. And if you're going to do this in the public and cut off and imply that I have wrongdoing, I do think that I should be allowed to ask for more information to be brought forward.
So respectfully, according to NJSBA rules, this has to be done in open...
No, I'm fine with that being open.
So just so you're aware, this isn't meant to... This is not, by the way, easy, and this is not meant to disparage or embarrass anyone. This is in regards to leadership. This has nothing to do with you personally.
No. I would beg to differ that this is not meant to embarrass, especially with the timing with the election, because I'm only president for another two months.
I don't think that's supposed to be discussed from this dais.
I'm speaking.
Point of order. This is not how we would be conducting the debate. This is an open discussion. This is not a dialogue back and forth.
All right. Who recognizes who speaks in this position?
Well, President Gwass is still the president, still presides over the meeting. This is an open motion. Discussion is still on the table. Board members are all able to provide comment and discuss it. And then at some point, when the members indicate that discussion is done, there's nothing else to discuss, you can move it to the floor for a vote.
And what's the potential outcome of the vote?
It's just a vote of confidence. It doesn't result in anything actionable.
All right. If we are insistent that I not ask Dr. Valeski to speak, then I'm being put in a position to not be able to explain why I sent the email, which perhaps is the point of this. I believe that Dr. Valeski has the right to speak as a non-voting member of the board at this point. Does he?
Dr. Valeski can choose to provide information, but he can't be compelled to say anything.
Okay. So I'm not compelled, but I believe one of the elements that you're discussing here may have been the communication or the announcement of a selection of a superintendent.
No.
No?
No. It's the announcement that, the email that went out to the entire district. Dr. Falco, is that the email you're referring to as well?
Yes, ma'am. The one that came from East Brunswick Public Schools, signed by President Heather Gwass.
Right. Announcing the selection of a new superintendent.
Indicating that it was on behalf of the board.
Okay.
No one is to conduct board business on behalf of this board unless this board is made aware, even the board president.
Okay.
The board president can only do so after they have consent from the board to act on their behalf.
So I'm aware of anecdotal... I have anecdotal evidence that a conversation occurred in the proximity of multiple board members, that a communication was being prepared, that a new superintendent had been appointed by the board. I'm aware of that. I witnessed that. I witnessed acknowledgement by certain members of the board sitting here tonight that, yeah, that was going to happen.
From Nicole Tibbetts to the district, we received that email as well in official capacity, along with a picture of our new superintendent. So there were two emails.
Right. And we typically would communicate to our larger community the action of the board. And historically, at least over the eleven and a half years of my experience with East Brunswick, president of the board was the spokesperson for the board.
After consent from the board. You cannot act on behalf of the board without consent of the board. President of the board is the first among equals. It does not give a, you know, you can do whatever you want.
And this is specifically after requests for improvement in communication and processes for communication. One of my email requests was for a process outlining communication if we don't have a policy or regulation, because unanswered emails create unproductive opportunities because we're not able to collaborate or get information. So we come to these board meetings with our questions that are unanswered. Again, that speaks to a lack of leadership and a there should be proactive information offered in leadership, not reactive requests from people who are your equals.
I agree that the member of the board, the boards all have equal value, equal weight, equal voices. I don't debate that at all. What I would like to say is that the number of emails that come every day as board president are substantial, and I read them all. But the other day, I tried to put together, this was in the end of September, I was trying to catalog in response to people's requests that I be more responsive. I took just one board member's emails and tried to reduce the font, take out, you know, all the big spaces between, because I wanted to print them, because I find the email server difficult to go back through. So I tried to print them all and put them onto one doc. And I worked at this for a very long time, and I was thinking in my brain, as a methodical person, that I wanted to create some kind of spreadsheet so that I could keep better track of, because I've said to board members, I read the email, sometimes I email back, sometimes I call Dr. Valeski to ask him to take action on it, sometimes I try to get more information and make a phone call. But in trying to collect the emails just from one board member, I realized once I had put this doc together and I was only through from July to mid-September, when I looked at it to print it, I was shocked to find out that it was a hundred and ninety-seven pages. The emails from this board are substantial, and I read them and I act accordingly to try to find information, which I have said. I have tried to be more responsive. A lot of the emails that I receive are a question which I answer, which is followed by the same question, the same question, the same question rephrased. It is frustrating on the communication. I've asked for some things that were frustrating, that multiple board members asked for, to discuss in closed session so that the full board could have their voices heard there and could be a part of the discussion, that it shouldn't be an email conversation. And then I was met with frustration that I was putting it in closed for the board to discuss. It is a tricky path. It is. And this has been, I mean, everyone said when we got here that this was going to be a tricky year for the board. I mean, we had people of very different viewpoints. I have done my best to bring people together under certain goals. I was asked the night of, after we approved the contract for the new superintendent, which was a very happy night, I was asked to put together an email, which I told board members out here, there was going to be one released that night to staff because staff should be informed first. I stand by that. Everyone agreed that I spoke to, and that there would be a second one in the morning to the community. I sat in here and worked with Nicole Tibbetts, but this came at the directive of the superintendent, who can direct me to do things in that capacity.
That is correct.
He is the chief officer of the district, and he can make those requests, which is what he did. So...
But he requests some of you to discuss with the board. You are the essentially liaison to discuss with this board. The authority of this board cannot be undermined. We are a board of nine, and I stand by that. And not just I stand by that. That is NJSBA rules. This is a board of nine. We have equal authority on this board. Sorry, Wilbur. Go ahead.
So I'd just like to provide a little context on this, and this is not, this is a discussion I've been thinking about a lot, and it's not one that I really want to participate in. But from my point of view, there's been a consistent pattern of limited communication that could have been more frequent, could have been more regular. And I've provided feedback on that at times over the time that I've been on the board. I know that other board members have done so as well, and for what it's worth, I haven't seen a whole lot of change in the pattern of communication. I don't want to really litigate the announcement, because then we get into technical things that are, I think, we're losing the forest for the trees. And I don't... And so I want to provide a sort of a big-picture view from where I sit. In terms of the superintendent search for Dr. Maman, we set an aggressive timeline, and we executed on that. And that involved a lot of talking among us back and forth in frequent meetings, and we were able to get our choice as superintendent, which is terrific. That's what happens when we have good communication. On the day that we made our selection, the next step was to offer a contract. And I know that there are a variety of things that happened that caused that to, that caused snafus and things like that. But from my perspective, there was radio silence from the day that we made the selection to the day that we found out that the contract was done. And that was a pretty long time to wait without anything. Even a simple, things are in process, we don't have any more news, would have gone a long way, just something as simple as that. So the contract goes out, we have the announcement, we have the issue with the announcement that, again, I don't want to get into the details, but now the process is moved on to the onboarding and transition of Dr. Maman into her new position. And that has been less than ideal as well, because I've had very little insight as to what's going on. And arguably, when someone is stepping into a new role, the whole transition thing is one of the most important things in terms of success. And that's why the board is so vested in understanding the process of the onboarding process. Now, I want to make it clear, I'm not really interested in saying, oh, well, these meetings are happening three days apart, maybe they should happen four days apart. I just want to know that things are moving along. And two things happened recently that I think for me illustrates, you know, the sort of blank wall of information that I've been getting in terms of this. The first is the CPAG meeting that Lori and I went to, which was a fantastic event, and I thought it went very well, and hats off to the CPAG folks, because they're wonderful people. They do an incredible job. But that's when I found out that Dr. Maman had been meeting with our special education team, including Louise and everyone else, which is great, because my understanding that went very well, which is awesome, but it would have been nice... that went very well, which is awesome, but it would have been nice for us to know that such a thing was, was going on. Just, again, because we have so much vested in this, that sort of flow of information would be extremely valuable for all of us, I believe. The second is the thing that happened in terms of a dinner between Dr. Maman and the mayor and whatever, and I don't want to get into all the details, because that's not the point. But it seems to me that the, one of the reasons that this thing sort of came about, and I heard about it basically yesterday when my phone blew up, is again, a bit of a lack of communication between members of the board, so that things were happening without other people knowing. And so from my perspective, again, I don't want to litigate all the details of an email or anything like that, because I don't think that's particularly useful. But there is a pattern of communication that certainly could be improved, and it hasn't been, and it's impacting, I think, the whole onboarding process. And I really regret having to make these points, but where we're at right now is that we need a successful transition from Dr. Valesky, who's put a lot of time and effort into our school district, to Dr. Maman. And we need this to be as seamless as possible, because lord knows, we have a lot of problems that we need to deal with come 2020, 2026. And my view is that our current leadership is not facilitating this. This is not a knock on the current leadership, because what we're, what I'm asking for is being given more than what, than what's available. And I want to be clear about this, because this is election season, and I do not want anyone to use what I'm saying here as a weapon against anybody. I want that to be clear. This is actually not an evaluation as to whether or not anyone should be on the Board of Education or not. I want to repeat that. No one should weaponize this at all. There's a difference between membership on the Board of Education and leadership. And that, to me, that, that's what this is about. Thanks.
I would like to respond. I am careful to balance my role as a board member and board leadership to make sure that I am staying in governance and policy, which is our purview. And I am careful to not overstep into the day-to-day administration of the district, that it is hard, and I am very careful. I do believe, based on what I'm hearing, that members of the board believe that I'm having more conversations about day-to-day administration than I am not. We spoke this afternoon, and I'm disappointed in some of what you said, because we spoke this afternoon, and I know you know, Wilbur, that I found out about what was exploding on Facebook from you. And yet, you're saying, you know, you want updates, you want, I had, I am in no way involved with the dinner, with the incoming superintendent, the mayor, and in fact, I told you, I didn't know about that, but that I would reach out to her to find out where the truth was in that, which I did, and I called you back. That was at the exclusion of time at home with my daughter, and that certainly was at the exclusion of dinner. But I was good to my word, I reached out, I found out what was going on. I also spoke to LeWu, I found out what was going on, and I called you back with that information. The other part of our discussion this afternoon that I'm still grappling with, I mean, I'm willing to do that, and, you know, I, I have thought through, I said I had no information different from the board about what was happening with the transition. I, I am concerned for the number of emails that I am CC'd on that the board sends to Dr. Valesky, that no one asked Dr. Valesky, that I'm aware of, I mean, I wasn't CC'd. So the question isn't asked, I, I would have said, I have no more information. And part of our conversation was that you said, then I should be sending out regular emails saying I have nothing to report. So I, if that's what the board wants for the remainder of this year, for me to send a weekly email on Monday that says, I have no information to share with you, I can do that. I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain about that, but I certainly can do that. But I just feel that there's a lot of substance here accusing me of knowledge that I don't have, and then not sharing this, which I didn't have to share. But if it is what the board wants for the next two months, for me to send, I will send a weekly email on Monday saying what it is that I'm aware of. I did, when I spoke to Dr. Maman about scheduling an upcoming meeting, and what the board wanted and concerns there, I did relay that to the board. That was the update that I had, that was the information I had to share, I did send that. And then we had some follow-up discussion about dates, which I was happy to see work out so well. But I've shared what I have to share. I am, I am frustrated for the amount of time that I spend reading updates and trying to find information for people, or get back to people, or find out how to handle things. I am frustrated that where my failing is, is not sending an email out more frequently that says, I have nothing to tell you. But if that's, if that's what this board needs for communication, I am more than happy to do that. It feels, it feels routine. This has not been, this has been an excellent experience, and this has been a rough experience. It's an excellent experience, because I'm so amazed that we pulled together and we hit that really rigorous time, time schedule to be able to offer our first choice a contract and get our first choice. And I have said before publicly, it was intense. The schedule that Bernie and I first put together and brought to the board and the board agreed to, I was deeply grateful for, because it accomplished the goal that we wanted, despite people trying to figure out why we were doing it that way. There are too many districts looking for superintendents, and I shared with the board that my goal, my thinking was, we needed to get out ahead of everybody. And there were other board members that said, we wanted the best for East Brunswick, and I really thought that was the way to go. And we accomplished that. So that part of being board president, I feel incredibly proud to have been able to meet the goal, to find a superintendent as a board and be a part of the leadership there, who I think is going to be incredible for the district. Other things about this have been very frustrating, like spending, I was on the phone today from 1:00 until I left to come here with board business, and I, I will send emails that say, I have nothing to say. But I spent from 1:00 to 6:00, well, 1:00 to 5:30, I left. But no, I was on the phone in the car, I take that back. I spent from 1:00 to 6:00 on the phone with board members and getting information for board members, and answering board members' emails, and finding information to answer the emails, and I will also throw in there a PTA phone call, and then checking back about that. And I just, it has not been, it is frustrating to spend the amount of time that I do and that I have made a choice to do in the place of things like my family, to be told that it is not enough, which is fine. If it is not enough, that is grand. I have no intention of wanting to be board president. In January, if I am re-elected, I have too much on my plate coming up next year to do so, and I am very, very excited about the new superintendent. But this, what this board asks for is sometimes very difficult to understand, because part of our conversation this afternoon was, you said, well, we wanted to know this, and I said, but no one said that. And therefore, my mind-reading abilities have failed me to know to send an email to say that I don't know anything about the thing that you want to know about, that you haven't told me.
Madam President, I'm interrupting, because according to Roberts Rules for Section 28, you cannot make a second speech on the same question so long as any member who has not spoken on that question desires the floor. Furthermore, a member who has spoken twice on a particular question has exhausted their right to debate the question for the day. Should you have further remarks, I do suggest you hold them.
Thank you for that.
So I actually have a remark on that. So, President Goss, this is a shock to me, because...
I'm sorry, but then if you're going to apply that rule, doesn't everyone have to follow it?
But we're remarking on this.
You already spoke, though, so have we exhausted everyone's first right to speak?
LeWu, you wanted to?
Yeah, I think we had one person.
It's an open discussion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the question? Dr. Valesky?
Dr. Valesky was asking about parliamentary rules.
No, I asked why, I was asking why a particular board member appeared to be running the meeting. I asked that question.
And I said it's an open discussion.
It's clarification. It was not clear to me, not clear to me at all.
Okay. So I have, I want to, I believe the public deserve a clarification for what happened. I tried to, I will tell you everything from my heart, I'm not a person, I never lie, I'm going to tell you what happened. I'm a person, I want help, always, no matter under which capacity. After we got new superintendent, I asked me a few questions for myself. Number one question is, is Evelyn a East Brunswick employee yet? My answer is no, not yet. Second question is, is Evelyn a good person? My answer is yes. And then number three question I asked myself is, can I treat her as my friend, personal friend? My answer is yes. And then, my fourth question for myself is, can I introduce my new friend to my old friend? Of course, yes. As a professional, I match my old friends, match my brokers, everybody, export business, that's why I set them up, we have dinner together, we have coffee out, you know? That's the way I conduct my business. After I answered my own four questions, I said, that would be good idea to, to bridge the incoming new superintendent and our current mayor, let them become friend, to know each, let them know each other, because that would be good idea to help. Of course, Dr. Maman is not East Brunswick employee yet, so there is no so-called board business for me or for anybody to talk about it. So for that reason, so I tried to match them up. I made a reservation, and I sent the, my reservation to a number which Evelyn normally she don't check, so she didn't know where we got their time and their table, and of course, she didn't show up. And then after two days, she found out, oh, there's a message here. So she called me immediately, I said, that's okay, there's nothing formal, I just tried to set up a friends dining out, nothing serious, you know, if you have time, we can do it again, and very unfortunately, you know, I'm, I'm only the person now busy, mayor is very busy, Dr. Maman is very busy, so nothing happened. So if the public believe I made mistake, I will apologize. I'm trying my best to help, that's always have been doing for my last nine years. When I first run, my oldest boy only, less than two years old, I'm doing this, it's not for myself. If the result is people believe, oh, LeWu made mistake, I'm going to apologize, I'm willing to take any consequence. I'm, I'm the person with integrity, I never lie for anybody, I never vote against my will, because the purpose here is try to help the entire community. That's my intention, that's my sole intention, to try to have my new friend meet my old friend. And unfortunately, it didn't work out that well, the result was very, you know, not as planned. I'm sorry, it's my fault if you guys believe, if the community believe, I apologize from my heart. I'm, I believe, you know, I'm acting as a normal person, as a professional, I always, just like I did every day, you know, I dining out with my friends, my new friends, old friends, my clients, and if anyone in the community want to hang out with me, you're welcome, because, so you know, that's the thing, I want the public to know what is really happened, because I'm the party. So that is the truth, I don't want people guessing for anything, that's the entire thing what happened. And the result is, is now make some people unhappy, make people angry, I'm sorry, I apologize for it. I'm not with any bad intention, and if I'm willing to do anything to compromise this, to remedy this, that's me. You know, I apologize, if you believe I made mistake, then I will take it as mistake. I'm still, you know, that is my intention, that is where my heart is, I want to help, I desperately want to help. Why? Because this town is in very critical moment. We have new superintendent, which provide us a golden opportunity to sail to the right direction, to the next level. That's why I'm so desperate. I have very high stack on this community. I don't know how many families have three children in school at the same time. I'm have three, I have three children. I work for every day for the, for the community, I'm not for myself. So that's for the same reason, I tried to have my two friends meet to dining out. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, I'm sorry. So that's what the story is, and then I really hope community understand, I didn't do anything with bad intention. If you want to talk, I'm open, if you want blame me, I'm going to take the blow, I'm sorry for that.
I would say, LeWu, things don't always work out the way we intend, right? And I respect and appreciate the fact that you're, and I do believe you, that your intention was pure there, I think it was a mistake, and I have a lot of respect for the fact that you apologize. I think personally, for me, I think that the, look, we're two and a half weeks away from a major election that is going to drastically change the four of the seats up here, right? I don't think all four incumbents are coming back. I don't have a crystal ball, but that's just a feeling. So I, I, look, I haven't been overly pleased with communication that's gone on, you know, some of the things that I've heard here and how we've handled that. It's a tough role, I'm sure it's a tough role, and I don't really envy you for being in that position, Heather. The leadership in any organization and any, you know, company, team, or whatever, is complex, compelling, and requires someone with a lot of, you know, really strong skills. And, you know, I think we're learning through this process that as we look forward, we really need to identify someone who has the ability to communicate effectively and bring people together, and, you know, help to orchestrate healthy dialogue, and that will, that will play to the service of the community at large as we go forward. So I hope that, you know, we all keep that in mind as we continue to progress here. But at the end of the day, for me, you know, we're two and a half weeks away from something that is going to drastically shift the dynamics of this space. And frankly, and I've asked for this, and I put this in an email three or four weeks ago or whatever, I said, we're in the midst of the most massive transition that any of us are going to experience here. I'm really proud of the work that we did to find and secure Dr. Maman, I think she's a dynamic human being who's going to lead us in a very positive direction. I'm so excited about that. But we need a plan. You can't move anywhere in any direction without a plan, and if people aren't rowing in the same direction. And the problem that we have had, and it's a deficit of ours, is that we haven't been able to establish that, and that's not fair to her, and that's not fair to us. And, you know, without that, this happens. Everybody's confused, everybody's angry, everybody's blaming each other. It doesn't work, like, it just doesn't work. So we need leadership that's going to help us to push that plan forward, and it's going to pull in the expertise of all of the bright, like, bright and dedicated minds that are sitting around this table, and all of the incredible people who are a part of this community, you know, within the district, and we need to help to support Dr. Maman through that process. So we still don't have a plan. That's not fair. And it's crazy. I mean, it's like absolutely crazy that we don't have something that we can hand to her and say, look, this is what we envisioned for you, it's not set in stone, right? Plans change, things shift in life, that's part of being human. But, you know, that to me right now, I think personally, that we're better served, like dedicating the time and the energy towards a plan. Let's focus on what this looks like. In two and a half weeks, we're going to have a really clear understanding of who the new people are, who are going to be coming in to help push that forward. I think that's where this conversation should be. I don't see another way. I think we're kind of just stepping backwards, to be quite honest with you. And it feels like a little bit of a waste of time. My opinion. But I, you know, I just wanted to share that.
Could I say something? I think I need to clarify for the public and the board that this transition is not happening in a vacuum. So I want to distinguish. Mr. Cummings, when you said a plan, are you talking about the board's plan?
But I think we're also getting out of the scope of the current discussion, which is, I think, on communication and not so much on transition. So I just want to be mindful of that, because you are within a certain...
Okay.
Limitation.
That's crazy. This whole space is also crazy. I mean, I have to admit, like, it's just, like, we can't have a conversation, which, I hear you, and I have a lot of respect for you, but like, that's another thing that drives me nuts about being up here.
Oh, gosh, okay. I think collectively, what we're, like, I think we all went through the process together of picking a new superintendent and felt like supercharged and super excited about that and the prospects that it brings and she brings. And I just feel like somewhere between that meeting and here, we lost our place. And I feel like the gap is just too, it's too far when we're going through a transition. And it leaves and creates this emptiness. And this creates these fractions and these silos, and we live in them, right? Because things show up in places and we're like, I don't understand why this is on Facebook and I don't know about it, or I go to a meeting and community members know this and I don't know this. And it's really hard, because this is supposed to be our main source of dialogue. But we survive on having one a month, which is not, it's not, it does not set us up for success at all. And I just feel like it has created a vacuum. It has created a vacuum that I feel like some of us are in, feel like we are in. And to continue on this path, I just feel like, again, we, I'm sorry, but I'm going to say the transition word. Like, there is no, like, I just feel like we're sinking because there is no plan. And if there is a plan, maybe some of us know it and some of us don't, I don't know.
Can I clarify?
Yeah.
I'm not saying those discussions can't happen, but there's a motion that's on a particular topic. So, but you can have that discussion still within the good for the cause, just after the motion has been decided. So you can still bring that up, Tim too. Just this particular motion is on.
So maybe I'll change it then to, like, leadership. I don't think it's any, I don't think it's a fault. I don't think it's a person, I don't think it's a fault. I just think that this system and this creation is not set up for success in the way that we need to be communicating to see a successful transition. And so I don't know the outcome here. But I just know that collectively as a board, we have to move forward together, because that is the only way we work to support ourselves in the community. And we are elected here to support kids and to support the community. And again, we have a new superintendent and we want to collectively support her. So I think communication, however, it has to be reestablished, like, has to kind of find a way that we can work together. And we all feel heard, we all feel responded to. And I also say, like, the whole PTA thing. I'm one of the people who sent two emails and didn't get an answer until the day before, when collectively we all got an answer. But then it seems that some people got answered before that. And it's like, again, value, we're all equal, right? And it's, again, I don't think it's a fault of anybody. I just think that we need to, as we move forward, create better ways to communicate so we're all at the same table. And I don't feel, and we don't feel, hey, I'm sitting next to Tim and he knows things that I don't know. But Anna doesn't know either, but maybe Wilbur knows. And I feel like that is where we're breaking down. And I think that we need to fix that. And we need to say, like, this is our plan of communication, this is how things go out. Do we need weekly updates? I'm happy to get a weekly update that says there's no weekly update. Maybe it just makes me feel better. And I just know everything is okay. You know, like, or if there's things going on, then we need to know there's things going on. And collectively, how do we, and maybe Frances, at the end of this, you can let us know how other boards that you've worked with handle this when we can't respond to everybody in an email. We can't do shared Google Docs about things and make comments. So how do we work on collectively going to get, like, going forward? I think that for this board, that means adding more meetings or putting in more time. I don't know. And so perhaps as we go forward, that's a discussion that the board has to take. But meeting once a month is not setting us up for success. And it is not supporting a transition. And I think what you're hearing, Heather, is we just want, this board wants to be well informed. And we want to be a healthy board that communicates and collaborates together. And that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I have to, just tagging on a little bit what you said. I hate surprises. I absolutely hate surprises. Don't give me a birthday party, a surprise party. I don't want any of that stuff. I want to know things ahead of time. I want to be prepared. And this is going back now to the budget season, where there was a big PTA meeting at Hammershold. And I was on my way to a township council meeting. The next thing I know, my phone is blowing up. Anna, where are you? What do you mean, where am I? I'm going to the township council meeting. Oh, well, there's a presentation going on at Hammershold. What do you mean, there's a presentation? I don't remember seeing anything about a presentation. Well, there was a presentation given by Dr. Bowley and President Goss was there. And we didn't know anything about it. And then I'm reading about this meeting on Facebook the next day. That is not good. That is inappropriate. I had to go and send an email and say, hey, why is a presentation being given that we know nothing about? Because you're talking about changing Hammershold to an elementary school. I think that's something that we should know. We should have had that information. I had to send an email asking, hey, can we at least have the PowerPoint presentation so that we know what was given? So I mean, this has been an ongoing issue with communication. It's not just, you know, the last few months. And that's my two cents.
I can respond to that, because that's a different issue?
Has everyone else?
Mm-hmm. No, she's already spoken. Same problem as me.
Yes, okay, so then, yes, yes. She asked first, she just raised her hand first.
So to address the PTA meeting, there had been a large community request for more transparency from the board. Could we answer questions? There was a request from, directly from Mary Ann, as the PTA president, not as a board member, that could I come to the meeting to answer questions? And I said that I would try. This was new for a board president to go out and do. But the community was looking for more opportunities to voice an opinion and answer questions. And I said, I really couldn't speak to what was happening. Dr. Bowley was going, I had no part of the presentation. But I said that I would take, and my intention in going, was to take notes and bring back to the board. And I took a lot of notes. And there was a lot of discussion about how the public felt about the budget proposal, about how we felt about the budget proposal. Obviously, our meetings went very long about that. My intention was not to be there to do anything other than respond to the way the community had. I responded to the PTA's request to go. Interestingly, there was feedback that that was a good thing to have done, to be there. And I tried to just, and I kept saying at that point, the board doesn't know what the board doesn't know. If people in the PTA want to voice concerns, and I can take that back, that's a good thing. Dr. Bowley answered questions about the program that she had. I didn't have answers about the program or the proposed program. But it's interesting, because at that point in time, there was so much talk about increased communication to the board from, and I said I would go. I was asked to go, I said I would go. I didn't make any statements on behalf of anyone other than to answer questions mostly about board procedure and to listen to a lot of concerns. It was a very long meeting. But, Mary Ann?
So just to that PTA meeting, yes, I was, am PTA president, co-president now at that time. And we heard from our constituency that they wanted to have a meeting, because there's a plan. There was a presentation given here in this room about changes that were coming. It was something that Dr. Braun said that triggered everyone to say, hey, what's actually going on here? So our constituency asked for an ad hoc meeting. This was not planned, not on our agenda for the year. We held the meeting. President Goss reached out and said, you know...
I did not reach out to you about that.
This was at the ad hoc meeting here, the different ad hoc meeting back in March.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you did reach out.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the PTA meeting.
No, no, no. You were saying that you want to be more involved and more aware. So when this opportunity came, I said, we're having a PTA meeting. If you would like to attend, so that you can see what the concerns are from the community, this is a good opportunity for you, and they don't have three minutes to stand at a podium, but you're in a room with them and it can be a back and forth and a discussion. You accepted. Dr. Bowley was a surprise to me. Dr. Bowley showed up and said, where can I set up? So I think what Dr. Braun is referring to is the presentation, not your presence there, just for clarification. That presentation was a surprise to you as well, I believe.
It was.
Okay, so just to clarify, like, that had nothing to do with your presence there. As far as your comment about the amount of emails that are sent, because I also heard this from the community, that I apparently send way too many emails. But I like to make informed decisions. So when I send emails, my emails are valid. There's nothing in them that is annoying or, you know, things that I should already know. My emails are asking, they're the same questions that I ask in here. And I don't know if anyone feels that my comments are not substantiated, but they are. Because oftentimes, they're clarifying things for people on this board, including you, President Goss. And so it's really upsetting to hear that it's frustrating how many emails are sent. Because to me, as a leader, what I would see, if I was getting so many emails, I would say, we have an issue here, because we should be making it, should making things clearer so that we're receiving less emails. And maybe that's something you're not used to, but I'm all about hard conversations and I'm all about sending emails to get my questions answered, because I am not comfortable voting on anything that I don't have every answer to. If there is even a doubt in my mind, the smallest doubt, I am more inclined to vote no than to vote yes. But I don't want to sit here and vote no on everything. So I try to make the most informed decision possible. With regards to your statement about, would you like to send an email and say, I have no information to report? That's a problem for me. There should be something to report. You have told us that you have conversations with Dr. Valesky daily. How is it possible that there is nothing to report from those conversations? You have also sent us in emails letting us know that you spend hours on the phone with administrators and this and that, and like, even during the superintendent search. How is it that there is nothing to report back to us? You know, I feel like I'm oftentimes left in the dark and I'm constantly reminded of my tenure on the board, which I'm very well aware of. But I don't think that negates my ability to make decisions on this board. So when I send emails, I expect them to be responded to. And when I rephrase my questions, it's because I didn't get an answer. And, you know, if the answer is vague, it's really like, I don't know if it's because I didn't word it properly in my question and that's why I've rephrased it. And oftentimes, it is. I mean, I asked for a communication protocol and I received an email back from you saying, who do you want to raise? I didn't want to raise anybody. I was asking for a communication protocol of, hey, this is what's expected. You send an email, this is when it should be responded to. Superintendent to board, board president to board members, that's a standard thing. That's like, that just, I'm all about setting people up for success. And if we don't have protocols in place, how do we know that needs aren't being met and expectations aren't being met? So, you know, I understand it's frustrating for you to have so many emails, but if you're getting so many emails from so many board members, that should be a very telling sign that there's a communication failure somewhere along the line. And it shouldn't be that I'm sitting here right now feeling like I send too many emails. And I will continue to send emails until December 31st, unless I'm reelected back in. And I don't think it's fair to sit here and say, oh, well, there's a transition and it's just another two and a half weeks till elections and then till January, because I have been appointed to this role until December 31st. And I guarantee everyone, I'm going to give 200% until December 31st. So I'm not sitting back and just waiting for an election. Sorry, it's not going to happen. Thank you.
I agree with that. But I also want to say, when I said there were a lot of emails, I was trying to create order to make sure that I was responsive to them. You and I had talked about responsiveness and I was trying to see where, you know, I had followed up but not gotten back to you to say that I had followed up, or I had gotten information but hadn't put it in writing back to you. And I was trying to create order when I saw how many emails had accumulated. And not that it's frustrating to receive that many emails. I just, in my mind, have a hard time reconciling that I'm communicating or I'm answering or I'm following up on that many emails to then also be told that I'm not communicative, because it is substantial. Which is fine.
Sorry, President Goss, I'm sorry. But, you know, when we were doing the superintendent contract, how many emails did you receive from all of us collectively? And there was no response for days, for days. So please don't sit here and tell me that you were responsive, like, that's, you're making me look like a liar. And I'm not, because everyone can attest to that, you know? And we were, you were spending hours on the phone, so were we. We were calling each other, like, did you hear anything? Did you hear anything? That's not a fair statement. So please don't say things that, you know, make me look like I'm saying things that didn't actually happen, because they did, and everyone can attest to that.
And I spoke to the board after that and said, I would in the future, having to do with the search, if there was nothing happening, send an email that said that to date, there was nothing happening, because that was why at the pause, there was nothing happening.
So I had a request for some information a while ago. And this is after we've had conversations on communication style. And to my mind, communication style is a choice. You know, there are many models of communication out there and people can pick and choose what fits well with them. The particular question I remember is, how many students currently are in the Hammershold and Churchill Music Programs? And how many students participate in ninth grade sports? Pretty factual things that administration should be able to handle. And I didn't need it in a hurry. And I sent the request to the superintendent and the BA and CC'd the president and the vice president, because that's generally what I do in those types of things. And I waited. And the only response I got back was from the president that said, oh, this will be presented at a retreat that we'll be having. I don't know what retreat that was referring to. But it seemed odd to me that a data point that I was interested in, in order to try to figure out things about the budget issue that we were going to be facing, you know, come the next calendar year, couldn't have just been answered. You know, and again, I don't want to be litigating... You know, and again, I don't want to be litigating individual points here. I think the main thing is that there's an overall pattern of communication that is less than ideal for the transition that we're looking to facilitate here, with Dr. Maman coming on, on board. And as far as I'm concerned, number one, the comments I'm making are intended as feedback. And we all know that feedback is great, because feedback should be gold, in terms of how, in, in, in terms of the things that people tell us. That's how we should be, that's how we should be thinking about it. And the second thing, again, this is our number-one priority right now, to make sure that this transition happens well. And I'll just make the point again, that's why we're so invested in it. And to me, there was a clear pattern of communication that was highly successful during the search, and that's why we executed so well on that. And now, and then after that, we made our decision, that pattern of communication went away, and, and, and now we have the situation that we're in. So, to me, it's pretty clear that really is the issue.
All right, well, if we, when we get to closed, that is at the request of the board, the item that was added to closed is the transition, so that the board can discuss.
And, and I also don't understand why that needs to be enclosed either.
All right. Okay, so, before we move on to that topic, is there any more discussion on this motion that's on the floor?
Yeah, I just, I just do want to add that this is, this is not at all personal. This is a matter of making sure that Dr. Maman is set up for success. And as good leaders, we need to make sure that we're aligned, and I don't even know that we are, because we can't meet unless we're, you know, we're in quorum, and then it has to be an open. So, that's what this is all about. This has nothing to do with you personally. When this idea was presented to me, I did check if we can have this conversation enclosed, because, you know, this is a little awkward, a lot awkward, actually, and, and you can see from everybody nodding, nobody's happy about this. I felt squeamish. I actually turned to Lou, and I was like, "I feel nauseous." But this, this was not intended to embarrass, or, you know, negate the service that you've put into this board. And, and like Dr. Pan said originally, "This is not about anybody's ability to be on the board. It's, it's a question of leadership, because that requires a certain level of communication." That's all, I just want to make that clear. Had this discussion been able to be had enclosed, according to the law and the regulations, we would have, and that's what I would have preferred. That's all.
For a point of clarification, couldn't this have gone under board self-governance enclosed?
No, this is a public item, because it's regarding just leadership, the board officer position.
And I, I checked, and NJSP, I did Heather, I, this, I'm sorry.
I, I'm going to echo what Marianne is saying. It's, this is very difficult to have here in public, but I think that what we're hearing is the shift of the board to say, "We want more communication. We want to have the same level of involvement as each person that sits up here." And again, I don't want to litigate each fact, but I also feel like, as the committee head for the EBEA negotiations, I sent emails, Liwu sent emails, and I asked, like, what was going on, like, at the end of October, this is going to start to happen, I'm new on the committee, Marianne's new on the committee, I just need to have some clarity, like, we need to have some discussions about this. Liwu sends an email, asking, as a follow-up, because I had spoken to him at, at the Middle Six County School Boards, and I'm like, "I haven't gotten anything, and I, I'm amiss, because I, I really just feel like I, I don't know," right? And then come to find out that there was already a discussion that took place, that this wasn't even going to happen until January, but it wasn't shared with the board. We, collectively, the board, the committee for negotiations, or the greater board, was not in tune for these conversations. And this is where I feel like, it's, it's a struggle, because again, I think, we don't want the responsibility to be on you, Heather. We want it to be shared. Like, yes, you are our board president, but we want to all be a part, and, and help, and pick, and assist you, and do what we can. And I, it's not about, like, I am grateful for the leadership that you have shown, for financial, when we did the budget in public. I think that there are changes that have taken place over the past few months, that have put us on a positive trend. I just think that we're just saying, like, these things happen, and again, people in the community know, or other people know, that we're putting off negotiations, and waiting till everybody new is in place, or there's a new board, and Evelyn, and Dr. Maman is here, but we don't know. And it's like, we're just, we're in the dark. And I...
I thought that email was directed...
Yes, but...
To Dr. Valeski.
I just feel, yes, but I think you, like, you were on it, and you were on Liwu's, and I think that you know that we're just at, like, I think it's the responsibility of leadership to say, "They're waiting for an answer," or "They're sending you emails," or "They're calling me, I called, and I asked you, 'Is everybody okay? Because nobody's answering my emails.'" I felt like, I feel, this is like, this is a horrible way to do this, and maybe we need to context about having to do this, like, this is, is not what I think we want to come to the table to bring. I think we're just, I think I, there's just trying to be feedback about how, as a board, we want to move forward. We want to be at that table, to know, like, this is the reason why these are being, are being put until January, and this is the thought behind it. We just want it to be shared, and I think that's all anybody up here is trying to say. Or at least, I'm hopeful. It's not a personal, it is not a personal attack. I just, and I know it feels that way, because I...
Well, of course it does.
I know, I, I know it does. And I'm just, I just think, like, I, I just think that we just want to be well-informed, and I think that we just want to be those, like, stu-, you know, like, the leaders and the stewards of the community, to say, "Yeah, we, we know that's going on, we know, and we hear it, and we got you," right? Like, it's, we're working through it, and feel confident that, as a board, we're working through it. But again, like, and it's just the setup of, again, there's, we signed, we have a new superintendent, there's a contract, and then, and again, like, not the fault of, of any one person, but we have this, this, this time, and I hate to repeat it again, but this, this large gap of time, where things just, it's like the world continues to move on, and we're just stuck saying, "Okay, so where, where is the transition?" We know Dr. Maman is here, we know she's meeting people, we want her to, but hey, we want to know. And I, I don't know, like, I don't know, responsibility-wise, like, as a leader, it just falls, I guess, on the president, to, to kind of collect and divide that information? I, I don't know. And I don't know what that looks like for going forward. I, I don't know.
I didn't have that information to collect and divide, any more than you did. And you send emails to Dr. Valeski when you have questions. You always have, you've always said you're sorry if it's, you know, you try to find a balance.
Oh, I vented.
I think we're off-topic from the initial motion.
I would wait for guidance from the attorney on that.
I think that topic is still consistent, but, you know, if the conversation is really just repeating itself, you can call the question.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to move to, but I don't want to get accused of moving the meeting. My apologies.
Well, that is, that is how it seems. No, I was just looking at for the communication portion. If you sent an email to Victor, I don't know if you had a follow-up conversation, you reached out to me and said, "Is everything okay? I haven't heard." I reached out to find out if everything was okay, and then you heard.
Yes, and then, yes, but at that time, the decision had already been made, and nobody on the board was part of that decision.
But I wasn't a part, I, I actually can't participate, not at all.
But Heather, you should be, that's part of leadership, right? Like, you should be a part of that conversation. So, if you are not a part of the conversation, it's, it's on you, as the leader, to say, "Hey, I need to be a part of this conversation. We are an employer. We can't just not have any, like, we're a governing body." You should feel the need to say, "Hey, what, what's happening here? Because this is, this is our vision. Is this aligned with our vision? You're having meetings daily. What is it that you're discussing, then? You know what I mean?"
She said that she hadn't received an answer, and she reached out, because I assume that there is an answer being given, the email was directed. I reached out and made sure that she got an answer.
Yes, but at that time, I had, I hate to, I hate to go, to like, go piece by piece, but I, I know, I had sent, I think Marianne had sent, and I think Liwu had sent. And I think that that's the problem. We're all, like, that's part of the problem, we're all just hanging there, waiting, and it's like, this, like, is it happening? Is it not happening? Where do we have to go? Where should we be? I don't want to wait till the last minute. I don't want to look ill-prepared, right? As a board, we are elected and here to do our job, and to be prepared, and to, when we represent ourselves at a committee meeting, or a negotiation meeting, to have the information that, that we have, or that enables us to make good decisions. And that's it, like, but, but I think it's just been, our, like, since the finalization of, of Dr. Maman's contract, I think we've just been floating. And I think that, for many of us, we just want to be standing on hard ground, and saying, "We have a plan, we're confident in our plan. We can change our plan, we can tweak our plan, it can look different." But we know, everybody knows the next steps. And I, again, like, it's not a personal, I don't think it's, it's a fault of yours. I think if you haven't been a, a part of a superintendent search, like, and had to, to navigate this process, but we, we need to, yeah, to communicate, like, there needs to be somewhere communication. And I, I don't know, you know, we can collectively talk about how that looks, and what the expectations are of the board as, as a whole, I think.
Well, I don't know how to answer for, I'm not answering emails on behalf of the superintendent. I am circling back when people come and say they still want answers, but apparently, that is on me, too. That's all I've got.
Yeah, I, I'm ready to go.
And I am, I do want to say, I added, I think, October 6th, to the closed session agenda, the discussion that people were asking for. So, this, they repeated, "We need a plan, we need, we're supposed to be getting there, so that everybody can voice their opinion about what they want that to be," or ask questions about the questions that keep floating around, about what's happening. I have questions, too. So, it is, it is frustrating, in that I set a time for that, at the first available time, and we will be having that meeting, to be told that we should be having that meeting. It's at whatever o'clock when we get done here.
No further discussion, you can move along to the vote.
Can I just get clarification on what the point of this vote is?
It's a vote of no confidence.
And there's no outcome, it's just a vote that we express whether or not we have confidence in just the president, or the vice president, and the president?
The motion was made for the president.
And when it's done, nothing happens?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we're going to take a roll call vote? All right.
It's, it's a voice vote, it says, because it's a main motion.
It can be a roll call, it just can't be less. Anna Braun?
Yes.
Sorry, can you clarify what a yes means, and what a no means, for this?
It seems like a yes would be in favor of a vote of no confidence, and a no would be against the vote of no confidence.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Anna Braun, yes. Timothy Cummings?
Abstain.
Jamie Falco?
Yes.
Louis Figaro?
Yes.
Lori Herrick?
Yes.
Li Wu Hung? Wilbur Pan?
Yes.
Marianne Tanios?
Yes.
Heather Goss?
No.
711, motion carries?
All right. Anything else for the good of the board? I need a motion to adjourn.
Wait, no.
Ms. Wilber, second?
Given, no, 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 no. Given the discussion that's happened, we're, to my mind, we're still in the position that we were at the beginning of the discussion. It's not clear to me that there's going to be a plan to optimize the transition of, of our new superintendent into her new, into her new role. And given the tenor of this discussion, given the tenor of this, this discussion, it seems to me that the root cause is with the board leadership. So, I'm very reluctantly making a motion to have the president step down, in order to facilitate a successful transition. That, I also want to make it clear, that that's the only reason why I'm making this motion. And again, this has nothing to do with the election, this has nothing to do with being on the board. This is strictly a leadership issue. And again, this is a very serious thing, I don't do this lightly, this is not what I'm, what I'm about. What this is about is moving our school district forward, because the number-one priority for all of us should be the students. In order for the students to thrive in our school district, we need a great operation. If we have a new superintendent, that transition into the operation needs to be seamless, and that's not what I think we are seeing right now. This should not be used for entertainment.
So, Dr., sorry. Dr. Pan, if I may?
Yes.
So, in order to remove a board president by vote, you'd have to demonstrate that there's some sort of violation of law. And just noting that, because this could impact all, any future board president, right, if this process is not followed. So, if you are going to move that motion, you'd have to also express, or make some sort of demonstration of how the law was violated by the board president, or what law was violated by the board president, in failing to carry out her duties.
Okay.
And that's the specific law, in failing to carry out the duties, not like speeding.
Mm-hmm. No, thanks for that.
So, just to clarify, there's not a motion on the table, because it's an invalid motion?
It's for Dr. Pan to, to assess if he has a, a motion that would meet those requirements.
Hey, thanks for the information, I really, I really appreciate that.
Sure.
And to them, I'm just going to say what I say, said before. I think this is really important, that we get this right, and that means that we need clear communication. There are many ways to do this, there are many ways to do this successfully. It's up to the leader to actually execute on that, and do it successfully. I've done it myself, so I'm not going to make a motion.
All right, if there's nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn. Leave it.
This is not a pleasant meeting. I want to report to you that normally I don't report my meeting in Trenton, but last Friday, I, along with other 22 Board of Directors, we removed NJ, New Jersey School Board Association's president. So, you guys got the news? That's, you know, Miss, Mrs. Smith was removed last Friday, and there was no reason was given, but we did find she violated two rules of NJSPA, so we, you know, so the voting was 19... So we, you know, so the voting was 19 to 4. So the vast majority support that idea. So we removed her. That's the things I want to report to you. And people got to know what happened there in Trenton. We got, I was submitted to Trenton for meeting due to the sensitivity of the topic. No virtual option was given. So for multiple Friday night, I went there. We talked about, we analyzed the evidence. Very badly, I'm the only lawyer for that Board of Directors. So my role was difficult. But finally, we voted 19 over 4. So totally 23 Board of Directors vote, 19 of them support. So Mrs. Smith was removed. So I'm sorry to, it's really not good experience, but we experienced tonight again. And another statement I want to make is, it's not easy. Well, forget about it. I'm done.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause for the board?
Yeah, sorry. It seems like minor compared to all this. But we did say we were going to discuss the PTAs and the fee schedule for them. Because I believe that, you know, our PTAs are a vital part of our schools. Every dollar that they make goes back to our schools. I think that the PTA, PTAs and the PTA President's Council understand that we have to pay for things like custodian and security because those are things the school would normally have to cover. But as far as paying for the facilities themselves, especially on nights when those facilities aren't being used, I would like the board to reconsider that policy.
So I had a conversation, as I had said, I followed up with Dr. Valesky about that because it needs to go for the public's understanding. To change anything that's policy, that's governed by statute. We can't just decide up here that we would like to change that. So the statute says that we have to have first the idea considered in policy, and that would have to be the majority of the board, or a number of the board members, I guess. Is it majority or a number of the board? I just assumed if there was interest.
To forward it to a committee?
Yes, majority. Okay. So the majority of the board would have to be interested in forwarding this to the policy committee, which is why I couldn't just instantaneously schedule a policy committee. So I had intended to discuss this during the good of the cause, but I don't know, things got distracting. But I did speak to the President Council President today. I'm still, I am fine. If the board wants to put that forward to the policy committee, what will happen is it will go to the policy committee. If the policy committee wants to make a change or a revision, they will bring that forward to the board. The board has to go through two readings before there can be a vote. So if it seems as though things are moving slowly, it's required by statute that it moves in that direction. My conversation with the President's Council President was, and I related to Dr. Valesky, wasn't on the fee schedule, was not the concern that she had? And I think we're going to need, I don't know, I, we're going to need some feedback on to how to separate your role as board member and your role as PTA president. Because I was referred back to you as a PTA president to ask for more clarity on what was wanted there.
Well, I think Mr. Giacobi already commented on my role. I would only have to abstain from the voting as a PTA member, as would any other PTA member up here. So my PTA presidency doesn't negate my ability to vote on anything. It's only a PTA member. So if anybody's a PTA member, which I hope you all are, so then what happens? You know, that means none of us can vote? I mean, I don't know.
So I can offer clarification on that. So yes, you can hold dual roles as PTO president and board member. You just have to make sure that when you are on the dais, you're advocating and you're serving as a board member, not the PTA president. So for instance, I'm just using an example. Let's say there's an event you want to host or have the school co-host with you. You wouldn't be able to do so as a president. You would say, Dr. Valesky, or maybe the building principal, as the PTA president, I'm asking for, right? You just have to make sure those roles are very clear.
Yeah.
As far as voting, if you are bringing something to the board because in your role of PTO president, you find it would be beneficial for the PTA, the fees would be adjusted or reconsidered or whatnot, that's something you should abstain on because it's really coming as a PTA president. If it's something that generally the board had revised facilities policies that Strauss S.M.A., for instance, recommended, it's not coming through you as PTO president for any recommended change, but it's just more standard of course change, you would not be conflicted. You would be able to vote on that. So it would depend. And I mean, always see clarification in those areas, just to be sure. But just going back to that, it would require the board to approve of it, to go to policy, and then, yeah, the two readings.
And we're not voting on anything tonight. This is just a discussion.
I'm going to be looking for consensus on going to policy committee. Where I needed clarification was, I'm not entirely sure what we want to go to the policy committee with. I spoke and got one item from Jamie Wasserman. So I did get the one item from her that she wanted considered. And that was about the use of the stage area in Hammer Shuld, if it has availability. Which I'm very clear on and would be happy to recommend that they go to policy and ask that other people support that, if it was available. And she was very, very clear about if it's not rented in any way. But as to the fee schedule, there wasn't clarity in that conversation about what the PTA was asking for. So we need more clarity about what we're going to the policy committee about. And that's where I was not sure about the mixed role or the dual roles. I'm not to say that.
If there's a co-president, I would have the co-presidents in that. Just to keep it, you know, separated.
Okay. All right. So do we have consensus for?
Present question.
Go ahead.
For this fee schedule, there's multiple issues for this. So the number one, we need to definitely revisit. Number two, how to treat our own PTA differently from other nonprofit organizations in town and outside this town? I made it very clear in my emails. So we need to do this in a large scale because our current fee schedule is driving people out. We lost hundreds of thousands of renting dollars. We need definitely revisit. Either the finance committee is a large, or the policy committee. I think both committees need getting involved. We need to revisit. For the reason, PTA raises money for our children. They spend every dollar they raise for our children. So it's my opinion, they should be treated differently from other nonprofit organizations. And additionally, we need to reduce this, revisit, reexamine the current fee schedule. So if there's, there's too many, it's my opinion, multiple organizations couldn't get it because it's way too expensive. They can move, they can go to Monroe for the same purpose for $500. For here, it's too many. So we need to be realistic to access the renter and the additional fee we're going to charge. At the same, while we are solving our community, at the same time, we collect some rent to help our budget shortfall. So that's, we got to be balanced. Let me finish. So we need to balance the fee, the service fee, the security fee, janitor fee. We need to balance. I think this board definitely need to revisit this thing. We need attracting more renters to our school district, to use our facility, to generate profit. Instead, we are charging, if we're charging too much, people will move out. We're, you know, I believe there are more suppliers than demand. We need to be very, very careful. When we, our intention is to make some revenue, to help ourselves. But at the same time, we need to serve our clients and make sure they are affordable. And for our clients, they're not, not every client's different. Not every nonprofit organization is different. We need to keep this in mind. So just as my own opinion, maybe, you know, it's for you guys' consideration. But at this moment, I, there's a need for the revisit. But I suggest this will be done after Dr. Mammon on board. Because she will be the next leader for this. And I would suggest we postpone for two or three, two or three weeks and let Dr. Mammon to be part of this procedure and decision.
How long does it take, though?
Well, the entire process fee schedule need to be revisited.
But how long, like Heather said, it has to go through policy committee and then two readings? How long?
Well, when the decision we should be made, then.
I know, but I'm asking for the length of time.
So point of clarification? Has to go back to policy, whether it's changing the policy or regulation? Right? And there is both for this. If it's a policy change, it's two readings. If it's a regulation change only, it's one reading. So you could adopt at one singular board meeting.
Okay.
So it's a matter of what are the revisions? What do they look like? Are they impacting the policy, the regulation? The regulation defines the class. And then, based off of that, we would also, if there's an impact to the fee schedule. So the fee schedule is also just a regular motion. So potentially two meetings, depending on the timing of when a policy committee can get together. And then, from there.
I just want to be mindful of where we are in the school year and that some of our PTAs would like to be using that, that's all, you know.
And I think if needed, the financial committee should have a special meeting. That is durable, because finance committee, oh, no, I'm sorry. Policy committee only have three board members. No, I'm sorry, as a policy, policy committee. So the policy committee only has three board members. We can call a special meeting for this regard. And it's for, if we need the finance committee, but I don't think we have to do this, for the finance committee. So that's, but I strongly suggest we least wait until Dr. Mammon on board. Because she will be the leader for future years. I really want she be part of this procedure.
So just a reminder that the finance committee is a board of the whole.
Yes.
And they're, in my humble opinion, for what it's worth, I think there is an impact to finances. So, you know, the result of the policy would trigger some financial discussion. Because as we all know, there was an impact on, during the budget, in the budget discussion and adoption of changing how we charge and when things are available. So they're kind of connected.
Can I ask for clarification about, Leiva was saying that PTA should be treated differently, and it's not? Is, can I have clarification on that?
So in the regulation, there are four classes. And I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to go off the top of my head.
Mr. Crouchfeld, you sent that email to the entire board, correct?
I, yes, yes. So the, the regulation defines Class 1 as the Board of Education, the school district. So of course, we want to charge ourselves if we're holding an event at any spot. Class 2 is the PTA. Nonprofits are in Class 3. And then Class 4 is all other. Within the fee schedule, there are certain premium spaces that everybody, except for Class 1, the district, would pay for. That being J and PAC, just the J and PAC. If you're using a microphone, we would charge a LEC for like a dance competition, but we wouldn't charge a PTA or a nonprofit. The football stadium is a premium space. The new field hockey softball spot is a premium space. The, just for a little bit more information, the classroom space for a nonprofit is $6 an hour. Pretty good. So, but the PTA does not pay for a classroom. We do pay, charge for, like you said, SSOs and custodial, if we have to add. Just so the public knows, we do not make money off of those charges. It's kind of a wash because most of those events are taking place after hours or on the weekend, and we are paying those staff members overtime. So, but there are some non-negotiables based off of security committee. If you're holding an event, you're going to have an SSO. Because that's the standard that we've established. And, you know, if you're holding an event with food, we're going to have a custodian because it has to be cleaned and returned for service for the next instructional day. So, you know, there, I know there's a cost. And, you know, it wasn't too long ago, I was in front of the PTA council taking some lumps, but that's all right. It's worth the conversation. But, you know, there is reasonableness, but there's also, you know, in these budget issues, like, how do we manage that? And I'm sure that's going to be a topic of conversation again. So hopefully that gave some clarification and some information to the public. And that answered your question?
Yes, it did. So I do know one of the questions that had been asked was if it would be possible to change the fee or to alter the fee for the J and PAC if it was not being rented as a premium space and the PTA was using another space of the building at that time. So that would be something to go to policy committee. And then we're looking at the fee schedule is what wants to be looked at specifically?
I think, speaking as a board member, speaking as a board member, making that clear. The thought is, you know, the PTAs, every dollar that they make goes directly back to the schools. So why are they not in the same tier as the schools? Meaning, not to use the premium spaces on, like, if the premium spaces, it's a night where they're bringing in revenue, obviously, we wouldn't, are you, do you want to?
Yeah, I do want to clarify because it does seem like your comments are more PTA president because you're advocating for a benefit for the PTA.
I'm talking in general, just.
I understand you said that you're talking as a BTO member. And I'm telling you this really as protection. But the content of your discussion is more advocacy for an organization that you're the president of. So I think just a better course of action might be if this does go to policy and finance, like, let those members have those discussions. And the PTA can certainly give feedback to the board members to consider during those meetings. So it's not like you're unable to contribute, but just being mindful of the platform that's being used right now to advocate for certain things and.
Okay, let me add up it. PTA is different from school, that's for sure. It's a totally different identity. But for the nature of the PTA, they raise every dollars for our, and spend every dollar for our children and teacher. We definitely should treat it differently. So we can solve the problem. We treat it differently as special identity. But PTA is totally different from school. So hopefully I can answer your question. The PTA treats differently. So we can say, okay, because you are PTA, we're not going to charge you for certain thing. It is.
Okay. So I'm looking for consensus about sending this to policy? But we're going to need more information of policy. Okay. All right. I'm looking for, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just one other point of clarification because I know the Chinese school has been used as a point of comparison here. I understand the rate is $6 for the classroom, but the Chinese school uses multiple classrooms. So is it $6 for each?
It's $6 per classroom, per hour. There's a different fee for the auditorium, for the different spaces, you know, if they're using the cafeteria.
Yep.
So the fee schedule does state what those fees are. You know, there was a time when we had two Chinese schools operating out of Churchill, an AM and a PM. We're down to 1. And I believe it's the PM. I'm sorry if I.
We used to go to the AM.
And I've, over the years, have had a number of meetings with their leadership about cost. You know, I know the AM school left because of enrollment plus cost. We were able to successfully work with the PM school to reduce the number of classes, you know, and right-size it. And also remind them, you know, and I'm not implying that they left areas a mess, but if they left the rooms the way they found it, that would take less time to clean it and return it. So there was a time when we had both. The recommendation from us was, well, can you guys run at the same time? Because then you would save on security and stuff. And that, that just wasn't a viable option for them. So, you know, I think it should be noted that there is appreciation and understanding that, you know, there's a cost and we don't want to drive somebody out. But, you know, and we try to work as much as possible and make sure we're not overcharging. Just so the board also knows, when an event is put into school due, that's our facility rental management system. A quote is done, but we always bill on the actual. So if somebody says they're going to be in for 10 hours and they're only in for five, that's what we're billing on. All right? So, you know, we've had a number of conversations with the. So, you know, we've had a number of conversations with the custodial staff and the management on that side to ensure that, you know, that we are moving at a very brisk pace to, you know, get the rooms cleaned and move on. So we're, you know, there is some understanding, and I hope, you know, that that helps, it doesn't solve the problem. And that was some of the conversation at the PTA President's Meeting, you know, trying to understand and come to, to bridge that. So, but it sounds like we still have some work in progress.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't $6 for the entire weekend for the Chinese school, more than that, okay, thanks.
All right. So I'm looking for consensus, if we have a majority of the board that wants to send this issue to the policy committee to convene. Anyone interested in this? One, two, three, four? Okay. Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. I need a motion to go, oh, sorry, I have to read the closed. Oh, we have closed, though, right? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to adjourn.
If the board chooses, unless they, they don't need that, but, but I just have, I have, I have a question. So Mr. Hong suggested waiting until Dr. Mammon's start date of December 1st or after to have the policy committee meeting. I don't know if that's the pleasure of the board. When, when is the policy, when would you like to convene the policy committee? I guess is my question.
I would like sooner.
Yeah, why not now? Not now, no, not now.
But I would say, I would say due to the timeframe, starting sooner is better than waiting.
So we would have to work the schedule, that we coordinate schedules?
Just clarification.
Okay. All right. We have a need for a closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the, within the exception to the Open Publics Meeting Act, and are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJ SA 10-4-12B, and whereas the Board of Ed intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda, whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
All right, Weaver?
Second.
And Mary Ann? Was that you? Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Abstentions? All right, we are in closed, have a good night.